I put it in that paper because when you first start, it's very end. The great articles in all offices. It's amortizing, every day, every day since we have it amortizing.
Right, yes.
1.3 million, 600,000.
No, I, I, I. Yes, so are, so you are giving a right to the gates.
So.
With the exception of page two and this goes to not. This is, this is the one you said earlier today, I'll just keep this one.
Some tips here. Four bags, never. Move fast.
I'll keep two and three combined.
Friends, friends. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, friends. We have a couple announcements. Everybody ready? All right, come on in, all the way in. For those watching tonight's meeting via diligent community, the meeting is available livestreamed by the diligent community platform. Please note that chat feature is not monitored. Public comment is accepted in person. A link to the video will be posted to the diligent community website immediately following this evening's meeting. To improve the sound while listening to the meeting, please turn up the volume on your computer and turn up the volume on the diligent community site. The meeting packet for tonight's meeting is located on the diligent community site. For those attending tonight's meeting, bathrooms are located in the foyer through the double doors. Emergency exits for the room are behind you or through the foyer. If you haven't already, please sign the white tenet sheet on the podium in the back of the meeting room. This is a business meeting, the board asks for your cooperation to maintain decorum. Please be considerate and refrain from interrupting board members and other speakers. To improve the quality of the sound, there is a blue microphone directly to commissioners. The microphones will likely pick up additional audience voice and sidearm conversations. So if you can keep the. If we can keep the conversations in the audience to a minimum, it really improves the sound quality for those listening in. Calling this meeting to order at 6:01 PM, Thursday, May 11th, 2023. Do you have a goal?
Mr. Arshenba.
Here.
Mr. Lessin. Absent. Mr. Rapp.
Here.
Mr. Root.
Present.
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Kodo.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Do you have a forum?
Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. I'd like to move to item number three, remarks from visitors. It's your opportunity to address the board on any issue. We called upon, please come into our grand new podium, the center position in front of the commissioners. Speak as loudly as you can, state your name as clearly as you can for the record, and speak directly to the board. We have a three-minute limit on all comments. I'm going to ask our board members to observe the same three limit, three-minute limit, excuse me. And it's not a question and answer forum, so please do not accept a response or an answer from the park board this evening. If you prefer to share your comments in writing, then use the comment cards that are available near the signing sheets. Any park district staff will accept your cards and share with the board. Do we have anyone raising their hand in the front row to comment?
I'll go.
Okay.
So. My name's Rick Upber. My name's Rick Upber, I live in, on Church Street in Winnetka. You know, I still want to, you know, put forth my opposition to the land swap and the, you know, giving up the pristine property that, once it's, you know, is put into use under construction, will no longer be there. And, you know, one, I'm sure you guys are all in business, but, you know, one of the things that I learned in business is the three Ps, right, is people, process, and product, right? So what is the people, right? So you have to have a consumer, right, that wants to consume your product right now. And it appears right now that majority of the community does not want to consume your product, right? Then there's the process, right, that's involved when you do a business, right? And we, I, I questioned this whole process, could it have been focused and, uh, uh, very concise? And, you know, apparently with the issue recently with the village board entering into the conversations around what you guys had planned with the pipeline, that, you know, that evidently shows that maybe there was some lack of precision and lack of process there. And then the last thing is the product. And, you know, because you're giving, giving people the product overwhelmingly what they don't want from all the indications that I've had. So, and I, as long as you board members, as well, that we have a, a good decorum, we all people here, thank you.
Would anyone else, oh, sorry, didn't see you.
Mary, I think it's gonna be better if you hold your microphone.
I couldn't hear him too.
Yeah. You gotta call it close. Hold it close.
I will. I want to hear it, you never know. Can you hear me now? They're gonna hear me, hear me all over, right? Okay. Uh, I just want you to know, on Monday, I was at Elder Park for a walk. And there was a gentleman who had parked his truck and walked around the complete park, holding this phone in the air, way up high, like this. I could not quite understand, so I questioned as to what he was doing. To my surprise, he was listening to the birds singing, and the app would identify the sound with the type of bird making the sound. My point is, people do not always need to have a programmed activity in our parks. Elder and Centennial are parks that are not programmed, and people seem to relax and enjoy the open space. I am not an engineer, but I do understand finances. And I do understand that when one has been elected to represent the citizens of Winnetka Park District as a commissioner, one must make an effort to listen to those citizens, protect the dollars entrusted, and follow the mission statement of the Winnetka Park District. The Elder Centennial project is financially out of control. I walked the beaches and looked at the bluffs. The gabion baskets at Elder need repair. But if repaired, those gabions will continue to protect the bluff for years. Ninety percent of the steel piling is in good condition, and yes, the existing pier does need improvement or replacement. The existing grinds can be extended and some rock can be used if necessary. But the amount of proposed rock is an outrageous amount of large stone to be placed in a lake. It is always easier for a contractor to tear out and put new in, money in his or her pocket and out of the citizens' pocket. I propose to keep existing grinds and enhance and lengthen where necessary. To remove the north grind at Elder, has a proposed cost, and I could be mixed up on this, because I looked last night at the library, and it's hard to get that all written down, but I, I think the proposed cost is 82,000. Just to remove it. Removing the gabion basket, proposed cost is 35,000, and the existing gabion baskets can be repaired. Why is there a proposal for a cement construction road for a very high cost of 60,000? Why is it proposed, is it proposed to make a permanent new path for ADA when ADA already exists at Elder? Why is there a proposal to have more ADA at Centennial when the ADA requirements are already within the law for Centennial Park? The new proposal will remove an existing ADA assessable cement road for a cost of 20,000. The removal of an existing ADA path, cement, stairs, driveways, and so on, seems to be to be over 600,000. Replacing the grinds with rocks is more dangerous to swimmers, and it's costing just for the rocks, line 31, 967,000.
You're at, you're over three minutes.
I know I am, I just have a little bit more, thank you. I'd like to ask for your permission for this. Does this committee, community need parking for 144 cars taking up our existing green space? Is this proposal so Winnetka can rent spaces to Nutria for student parking? Let their, let Nutria take care of their students. This is more green space lost unless there's planned activities such as concerts. Have you seen 144 parking spaces used at our lakefront? Keep it as it is, quiet and passive. Listen to the people you serve, and I won't read the whole last paragraph, but I do want to read the last line. As of May 2023, you provide, as of May, how, 2023, you provide on the lakefront, boating, water activities, swimming, recreation, and relaxation. And we thank you for giving us a choice.
Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning.
Would anyone else, I can come forward. Rose, Suzie? I, I was working my way back.
Yeah, I know you were.
But yours, in the first row, come on up.
First, thank you, Kyle. I really like this. Um, and thank you, board, for supporting Kyle, for bringing this to us. I have four comments. Please, please listen thoughtfully. You need to have a well-thought-out interagency agreement for the Pike-Root River sub watershed, which is part, which Winnetka's southeast watershed drainage is a part of, for Lake Michigan. You need to be working in partnership with the village on a carefully thought-out watershed management tool for all of southeast Winnetka. It is incredibly important that this, you take the time to do this well, and that everyone has a seat at the table, including anyone that's necessary from the Chicago Metropolitan Water Reform Agent Agency. Two, ADA, Mary just referenced a couple of things, but you do have ADA less than a quarter of a mile away at Elder for use at Centennial. That is what is required, one quarter of a mile, I believe, is the guidance document. And you can get a quick ride down, I've driven down, a car down to, using Elder. And I would suggest that we do adjust the bottom part of it, but it certainly wouldn't cost what you have in your plans. We could do it much more simply and more attractively. At Lloyd, I was there several times this week, there are no rails on the bottoms area of the steps at Lloyd behind the beach house. And that's, if there's sand there, that gets to be a little tricky going down. You have handrails all the way down, but you do not have handrails there. You do not have rails on the stone steps over the south seawall, and that is very, very dangerous. And, um. Then on public safety at Lloyd, you build it out, and you still have major public safety issues and drainage issues there. There's slumping on the bluff, and I've been watching the bluff slumping, believe me, since the late 1980s, so I have been watching this. You have a rotting plywood platform at the southeast corner of the upper parking lot. The signage at the south end is inaccurate on the stone wall, seawall, it says, "Public Beach." Stops at the top of the wall, that is not true. If you look at the, you stand up there and you look where the fence line is, that whole seawall is completely on the Winnetka Park District property, and there is some sand, you know, a couple feet to the south of that. And there are no rails, and it is very, very dangerous to go over. But it just, you know, there's more beach that the public owns, even though it's a little bit. You also had 34 kids last Sunday afternoon about 4:30 actively playing on all of the rock seawalls at Lloyd. Only, everybody was having a fine time, but everybody was happy at the beach. But there were six young ladies, there were no gentlemen involved in this, there were six young ladies of about the 12, 13 age group, and some were sitting on top of the seawalls. Two were wrestling actively for about 20 minutes on top of the seawalls, shoving, pushing, arm wrestling, you know, all activities that are, you know, you'd expect from that age group, but I'm not saying.
Yeah, you're, okay, good.
And those are things that you have to be aware of. When you're looking at putting more of these in, let's keep it safe, let's keep a steel groin down at the south end, and enhance them if you need to, but they're easy to step over and you can't wrestle on top of them. But the other thing is that you cannot bind future boards and the general public for payment of a poorly and incompletely thought-out set of plans right now that relate to public health and the federal waters and ADA of the United States. Rushing a document through without public support is totally in, just opposite of your fiduciary responsibilities. And I would hope that you would seriously think about that role that you play up here in your leadership of the Winnetka Park District. You do have great ac, great.
Like from, yes.
Thank you, yes. But anyway, let's, let's keep it, and let's listen to the public, and stay within the law and policy and procedure.
Thank you, Suzie. Is there anyone else in the first row who would like to speak? Anyone in the second row who would like to come forward and speak? Anyone in the third row who would like to come forward and speak?
Hold your microphone.
Hold it. Close to it. My name is Jenny Solberg-Catsman. I've never been to a board meeting before, so thank you for having us. And I finally got here, I've rallied a few friends, and hopefully we can represent at least some of the younger families, mothers in that area that have moved up all in the last two or four years, five years, that I feel support a strong youth generation that will be the future of Winnetka. I thought it was interesting that, not to call out the woman in the back, but she immediately assumed that I was a friend of Ishbia, which is not the case at all, I, I have no connection whatsoever. I'm a third or fourth generation family in the North Shore area that have quite a bit of background with the Alliance for the Great Lakes. I heard stories of my mom and dad playing at, at the beaches all along the North Shore, and I couldn't wait to bring my family here to, to also gain those experiences. I think when we, as far as myself and my husband, you know, the reason we haven't been here is, our six o'clock on any weeknight is harder to get to getting sitteries and everything, so I feel bad that there hasn't been enough of support for work going into these types of areas for the community. My, our really good family, but Ed Harney used to sit on the board here, and, and, you know, I think the main point that we had talked about extensively was how amazing Lloyd and Tower and Hubbard Woods Parks have become. The main places we go in the Village Green as well, I live right near the Village Green in town. And, I mean, they're paramount to our, our families and these parks that we're spending so much time in. And we look at neighboring communities like Womet and Glencoe, and, you know, we see improvements being made there. We see, you know, Glencoe, you know, having made all those updates recently, and Gilson as well. And, um, I, I like, I thrive to have that same sentiment for our Winnetka beaches, and unfortunately, right now, it's just the two northern beaches, which we want to see the progress on the southern beaches, we've had, spent no time there yet, given, one, the destruction of the land, and so obviously, first and foremost, we need to preserve that, that bluff line there and put in the necessary work. You know, I know it's an incredibly high budget, and I understand the opposition behind that, however, we need to start somewhere, or else the whole beach is going to be gone. And, um, and I, I hope our kids, which, you know, I have three under four and a half, and we all hope to, we spend time at Elder Lane Beach, we lived, we bought our house so that we could be near that beach, and, um.
You're at three minutes.
Okay. So, you know, they're counting, if this happens in 10 years, or 14, 15, and, you know, I'm not gonna talk, make this a story about myself, but I would say just the majority of the families we know nearby. And, let's see, um. I guess, yeah, that's, that's all I'd like to say, so.
Very much, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Welcome.
I'm in the third row.
Excellent.
Thank you so much, my name is Kristen Cross. Want to sing a little something? Uh, my name is Kristen Cross, and I am also a Winnetka resident. I am president of the Little Preschool Board and a resident of East Winnetka. My family and I moved here four years ago, and we're thrilled that our local walkable beach, Elder Lane, was open for a few short months. We enjoyed it immensely. And then it hasn't been. We are thrilled to be able to live in such a wonderful, vibrant, family-friendly community. We are disappointed that there seems to be a loud minority against improvements that need to be made at Elder Lane and Centennial Beach. We pay a lot of tax dollars, and we want to be able to use such an incredible resource. We support having residents' fees versus non-residents' fees, because as these upgrades are made, they're going to draw a lot of attention, and we would like as residents to be able to use them. But the beach itself is an incredible resource. We are also a young family, I have a five-year-old, a four-year-old, and a two-and-a-half-year-old, and we recently just bought another house in East Winnetka, and we are here for the long haul and investing in every single resource that we have in Winnetka, including the beaches. So I would like to also represent my fellow preschool parents and families, and let you know that we hear you, we are paying close attention to this. We are the future of Winnetka, we want to take care of it, and we are really proud to live here, and we would love to have a beach that resembles that as well. Thank you, thanks very much. Now I'm gonna sing a little bit.
There are more people in the third row, I'm not sure if any of them would like to speak. Come forward if you would like to speak. Third row, fourth row.
I would like you to know that we also want Elder Lane open, we just don't want it open at a cost of 21 and a half million bucks off. How do I do it?
What is your name, please?
In this? That's one of my favorites.
Just taken.
Katie Stevens. I would like my notes entered into the public record along with the attached photos. The bluff is eroding, and you can look at my picture for the attached photo at Lloyd. You can't also put sand on Lloyd, which is this pile, I don't know if all of you park commissioners have seen the sand on Lloyd, this large multi-ton thing of sand. The IDNR permit that you signed agreed that in accepting the permit, the IDNR requires five years of sand monitoring, and in order for them to properly judge the sand movement, you can't add more sand without a permit, because they can't measure the sand movement. There is a significant, significant amount of sand for the attached photo, and it obscures and prevents accurate monitoring results. Clearly, the rocks are not working. I lived on Winnetka Avenue, and when the stormwater pipes were changed on Winnetka Avenue, it cost us as homeowners hundreds and hundreds, probably millions of dollars worth of damage. The village is gonna study stormwater in the east next year. In this, in this findings effect, you have a stormwater pipe that comes down from Green Bay Road, which is about a 16-foot drop, that is larger in diameter, makes a left turn, goes through a filter, which makes it slower to get out to the lake. However, I don't believe you can definitively say that this will cause neighborhood flooding in the east Elder Lane area. That would be another lawsuit. You need to include the impact to see what's gonna happen to all east Winnetka residents. The original review and approval of the stormwater pipe being moved was withdrawn by you all and by the village because the permit was withdrawn. The village will be studying a complete master stormwater plan starting in November. It will be part of our east neighborhood stormwater. Since the permit was withdrawn, that pipe will be revisited and should not be in the facts of findings. It has definitively not been approved by the village. I think you need to follow the IDNR rules as they have been outlined for sand management. Stop the sand, sand replenishment now, manage the bluff that has fallen into the water. And finally, at the very least, your, your plan has been outlined in the last meeting by about 50 people saying, "Stop the stop, stop the swap, we don't want to spend 21 and a half million dollars." Keep beach access, and every meeting needs to be recorded by the number of no-go comments. And no-go means no to the 21 and a half million. We want the beach open, you could do it for a million dollars or less. You have had citizens be here for two and a half years, and we feel like we're being slapped in our faces.
You're at three.
Fine, you have asked citizens to put these comments on public record that have not attended a meeting, and it looks deceptive and dishonest in the facts of findings, that our comments aren't noted absolutely anywhere. For this man's comment, you haven't heard the people, the process has been ridiculous, you have no growing plan. You have no growing plan like Kennelworth has, which is a fabulous plan. And the product is 21 million dollars rocks in a lake without a referendum. I demand a referendum.
Thank you.
And I want these to go in the record since we're not recorded in the facts of finding.
Is there anyone else in the last row that would like to speak or anyone else that missed an opportunity to speak?
Hi. My name is Chrisha Miller and I live on the east side of Weneka. And I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed the beaches for 29 years and I hope I will another 29 years. But when I first moved to Weneka, I could walk the beach. Granted, we had a lot more beach, but I could walk in the water in front of homeowners' houses and I could walk and pick up my sea glass and enjoy myself. That's, that's going to stop now because I can't even get across those rocks that are on the south end of Elder. Or, I'm not Elder, Lloyd. Lloyd, the beach that was just done. I was quite frankly shocked when I heard that the price of this beach has gone up to 20 million dollars. And it seems to me that it was like at 10 or 12 initially and it's just going up and up and up. And it seems like we're hoping that the village picks up half of the cost to redo a, the storm drain. And I don't think we should go ahead with the plans until we know for sure that the village is going to financially pick some of this up. Thank you.
I saw another hand in the back go up. I wonder if there's someone else back there that wants to speak.
Hi. I'm Mary Hickey at 7:40 Sheridan Road. My message is pretty simple and just I'm really here to reiterate that I am an advocate for really simplified enhancement for elder, successful beaches. One which protects the natural resources and open space. All this is stated in your mission and you are the stewards of that mission. This current project really overemphasizes the recreation nature that for some reason there's a body somewhere that thinks Weneka needs. And I'd like to echo what Mary said in terms of this beach is a pristine beach. It offers play and relaxation and tranquility. And my last question is, I'm not familiar with the legal points of this, but at what point does a 21.5 million dollar project go to refer? So you can hear what the public really has to say.
Thank you. I saw, I thought a different hand raised in the back row.
Rick Doran, 5:30 sunset. I'm not touching the microphone. So all those in opposition to a 20 million dollar project, I have good news. It's not 20 million dollars. I spoke rather extemporaneously a couple of weeks ago and sort of off the cuff, late at night. And the only thing, I felt I owed you a little bit of shoe leather time. I looked at the documents of 27 April, which are your cost estimates. I rearranged them into lines so you could see them in phases. And a lot of labeled things that are sort of labeled differently in different phases. You can't really tell across the lines. And added in all the things that the estimate doesn't cover, soft costs, permit costs, a lot more surveying, a lot more insurance, a lot more sequencing of work, working landside instead of waterside. I wrapped those comments into a spreadsheet and I gave a couple of budget suggestions on where to start to look and I'll hand you a copy each member and be done. Interesting exercise. Thank you for listening.
We can share.
No, no, no. Get your own.
Extra credit.
Get home. Put it in big print. Run over the guy that's not here.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes.
Can you bring up one of the plans so I can talk about it?
Probably send you a copy also.
It might be part of a later presentation, but it's not part of public comment.
Okay, so I can't talk, you can't bring up the plan. Sure enough, but did this help you? May I, did that do it? There you go. Okay, which phase is it? Phase one.
This is phase one of the proposed plan that has been put out for today's meeting. So this is the new plan that is not a 21 million dollar budget plan.
Okay, well, I wanted to speak about the plans past, I wanted to speak about the plans past Plan One. The one for the dog beach is incorporated or made.
Did this help you? Pushed up. Was kind enough to give this a break.
Okay. As you can see, you're putting a south breakwater on then. And the landowner to the south will undoubtedly put his own breakwater in. So one of my main objections to the plan is you have these two breakwaters sort of fanning off and catching a slot beach. Where are the models about what's going to happen to the sand there? You know, I, I, you know, we have to use the word, the word offensive. I think it's, it's, it doesn't have much foresight. Why don't you just do whatever you need to do for Elder and wait and see what he does on the south side and then grow off the back? It would be a lot.
I'm just going to interject to let you know that that plan shows what he has proposed.
Out of order, please.
Say again. I'm just saying.
Aren't you out of order?
No, I'm just, I'm just helping out. That plan does show it.
You're talking.
Well, I want to hear you talk. I mean, I think there's not, there's not been enough debate, but, okay, I see something. How far is he allowed to go out?
123. That's it. That's all.
Okay, so he's not going, I mean, this doesn't show, it's like a mere stub of what he could do. You know he's going to go big. So I think you should reconsider. Everything past, you know, the very first phase, you don't even know if you're getting the middle proper yet. And, you know, I don't know what to say. So that's all I wanted to comment on.
That was Joanna Carranza.
Yeah, Joanna, I live on Povida.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to move ahead to the next agenda item. We have new business.
Communications.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry. Communications. Yes.
So we have two communications, two articles from the record, one from the Tribune, and we're keeping track of those that come in from different media sources. So that's what's in the packet.
Excellent. Now we're moving on to new business. Item number 5.1, appointing two commissioners to negotiate the team for, to negotiate as a team for the IGA with Weneka, Village of Weneka for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of upgraded stormwater improvements at Elder Lane Park and Beach.
Do you want to take this one or you want me to?
For the IGA with the village. I know what it's about. I'm happy to address it. At our March board meeting, we made a motion to appoint two people to negotiate with the village. First of all, we identified the need to enter into an IGA with the village regarding the stormwater because the storm sewer system is owned by the Village of Weneka, is in disrepair. It's within Elder and the plan calls to replace it. I do want to remind people that a year ago, we were submitted for permit for the replacement of the storm sewer. That permit application was signed by village engineer James Vernal. There had been extensive conversations dating back two years prior regarding the design of the existing system, the outfall. We did accommodate the village's input. In fact, at their request, we extended the replacement from near the bluff all the way back to Sheridan Road because there exists a 100-year-old or nearly 100-year-old section of storm sewer that runs from Sheridan towards the bluff. There's a parallel 27-inch diameter corrugated, excuse me, reinforced concrete pipe that runs from the same point down to the bluff. Those two then empty into twin 36-inch corrugated metal pipes. They converge into a 54-inch diameter corrugated metal pipe that runs out underneath the pier. That pier and those corrugated metal pipes were planned in 1946. Best of my knowledge, installed in 1947. They're failing. A chunk of that pipe washed up on shore and the pier end is obviously failing as well. Long past life expectancy. That's why we've been working with the village. The village conducted a, a study of the stormwater in southeast Weneka some 10 years or more ago. They contemplated revisiting that, revising that. We're aware of that. We work with the village. We collaborate with them and we will continue to collaborate with the village to address a primary infrastructure issue. At the best of my knowledge, the watershed area that is tributary to that pipe that discharges Elder is approximately 280 acres of Weneka, southeast Weneka. It runs all the way to past Green Bay Road up towards North Shore Country Day. It, it is what empties out the underpass, Nutreer. It empties, it's what empties out the underpass, the pedestrian underpass at Willow Road. This is a significant infrastructure element there. Pleased to collaborate with the village on its, on its replacement and we will continue to do so. We need two people to negotiate with the village to vet it. David?
Well, part of life is knowing when you don't have the skills to be one of the board members to negotiate with the village on the IGA. So, it's not me. Warren is by far the most knowledgeable, has the most history, so I would suggest Warren. Cynthia, I spoke to you earlier. I would suggest Cynthia as well. You are passionately...
Precise.
You like details and that's a good thing. So I think that the two of you would be my suggestion, be the two representatives from this board to negotiate the IGA with the village on stormwater.
And this is an appointment so we can have a discussion. I don't think we need to vote.
Okay.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's great.
Is there any discussion? Is there any addition, are there any additional appointments? Yes.
Just a question. Warren, I want to talk about the plan. The plan you referenced that was done in 2013, wasn't that when the village was looking at the Willow Tunnel? Because I've looked at that plan.
I believe it in Willow Tunnel.
It isn't because when I read it, it was talking about the Willow Tunnel and it doesn't matter one way or the other. Do I understand correctly that the village is about to go out with an RFP to study the stormwater situation in east Weneka? That's what I've been advised by the village president and also village trustees. Are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that. Be nice if they'd made us aware of that.
Well, perhaps one year meeting, whoever in the meeting, they'll talk about that. Because it would seem to me that if we learn that that is true, we may have to do sensitivity with respect to what we do at Elder to get Elder open. I don't know. I'm just getting off track.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think, I think you've identified an issue. Warren's identified an issue. We have to partner with the village. It's their infrastructure. We have to partner with them if we want to fix this. It has to be, the pipe has to be fixed, the pier has to be fixed.
And we want to.
Let me, let me, Warren, I think, Warren, if you look within the body of the information that's been provided, when this issue came up last fall, the village issued, village engineer James Vernal issued a very comprehensive memo on this topic. I think for everybody's benefit to read it, to understand it, it would be very helpful to understand the existing system and how what we've proposed helps to facilitate future improvements as contemplated at that time by the village.
We're really talking about, you know, who should go and go off track. So let me, let me circle back. I think that Cynthia Rapp is, I agree with you, David. She is by far our most hardworking, dedicated commissioner. She, she is. She's fabulous. And I think she's well-respected. There's been a lot of history here in the last few years and Commissioner Archibald, you are without a doubt our stormwater expert. I know that sadly, you're going to be leaving us, but for this first meeting, if we are determined to have it before we have a new board, I wonder for purposes of the conciliatory if it would be appropriate for Commissioner Archibald and Commissioner Rapp to have that initial meeting. My, my hope would be we have two new commissioners coming on this board, a new board. And my hope would be that with the new people coming on, we might also have a new commissioner who can step in and have the skill set, not bringing the history, because my sense is there is some, some emotion there. So my proposal would be for this first meeting to have Commissioner Archibald with Commissioner Rapp, if Commissioner Archibald was even predisposed to do it.
I'm sorry? There's no meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
There's no, the board turns over. This isn't going to happen before.
So this is not the meeting on the 18th?
No, no.
We've told this was May 18th.
No, the May 18th is a meeting to discuss the permitting process as outlined in the village for waterfront improvements.
This is the IGA negotiation.
This is separate apart.
So this, I would second, not that we need to second a motion, but I would support strongly and wholeheartedly Cynthia Rapp and Warren James.
I would as well.
So I want continuity. I want subject matter expertise and I want precision. And I think that it's unfair to put new commissioners in that role because the train-up is substantial.
Is John, is Director, is that you the director of it? You?
Yeah, I think Warren and Cynthia would be great.
Any other?
Just one final comment. The community has been not pleased with us. We have not really gone out and surveyed to see who's happy and who's not. We have two very capable people coming on this board. And I think having a fresh face and fresh faces would be a very good thing when we are dealing with the village. So I would ask that you carefully consider that. And I also wonder if we shouldn't be discussing this at our first meeting when they have been officially installed, rather than jumping the gun now and making this decision at this point.
I'm prepared to appoint people. If you're willing to serve, I would be grateful to hand you. I'm not sure if, I, I believe I speak for everyone else.
This is replacing the stormwater liaison role that we have two board members departing? Or is this different?
This IGA is just for the stormwater pipe at Elder.
Okay, so it is not the same as the liaison appointments?
No, no. Sorry.
This is real.
Is that a, is that, this is real?
Well, I mean, this is, this is, this is a very important IGA.
So let me ask you a question. Is that acceptable to you?
It is. It's a little bit daunting, but...
I have full faith in you. Is it acceptable to you?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. I would, I would argue that we have chosen our two. Can I have a show of hands? Can I have a show of hands? I don't think we need to vote anything. Okay, perfect. So that's it. That's the decline. All right. Moving on to item number 5.2, temporary fencing permit for Elder Beach.
Christina, thank you. Currently, the temporary fencing permit at Elder Lane Beach, we are working with our insurance agency, Podermo. We have a scheduled meeting with them next week out on site to take a look at that further, along with their counsel, to make sure that we are moving in the most appropriate manner forward. As we continue with that, had some initial discussions in regards to what that looks like with members of the village of Winnetka. And I will be having continued dialogue with the IDNR and the Army Corps of Engineers as that progresses. I want to make sure that we're taking the right steps forward with our own insurance first, and then find out our waters that we have to navigate with those other agencies accordingly. I'm not too concerned with that. We are planning on taking care of some of the damaged materials that are down there and removing them in-house, as discussed previously at the last board meeting. We're going to continue on that after, as a value engineering phase of work. But right now, that's the update for the fencing. More will be known at the 25th, and we'll be able to report on it at that point. Kyle and I both are going to be meeting with that team now to discuss that.
I look forward to that. Okay, thank you. And then, temporary fencing permit for Centennial Off Leash Dog Beach.
Sure.
Yet again.
Yet again. Currently, we would have to meet the requirements for the village of Winnetka through the process because it would be temporary, but we don't have a timeline of what temporary means. So right now, temporary would be in perpetuity until something gets decided, voted, approved, and built at Centennial Beach. So currently, with that understanding that this would be temporary to the fact until something is built and constructed, the process for that would have to go through the village review process for designer review of the fencing. We'd have to meet the requirements for the fence coat for the village of Winnetka. Plus, we'd have to meet the code requirements for the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the IDNR. All those agencies and the time and money invested in that, where we're at with our plan now, what we're proposing, could be a lead time of three to six months, plus several thousands of dollars to meet the permitting requirements. At this time, it would be staff's recommendation to hold tight and keep our current plan of leaving the dog beach as a leech-leash beach in the interim until the board gives staff direction on which way to move forward with the permitting based on new information that's going to be presented tonight and in the near future, come the 25th, to get greater direction on the best way to use our, the best financial stewards of our dollars.
Are there any questions for Costa? Moving on to item number 5.4.
Well, I do have a question. Do we have anybody who is patrolling that beach?
In regards to what?
The leash. Again, I have been on that beach, and I've seen many dogs that are running off-leash. And if our concern is safety, if it is safety, then I would think that it would be fairly easy, forgive me for being naive, to get a temporary fence up. And I understand, you know, the permitting. But I am concerned that we have made an issue of this. And if we have dogs that are running, I'm just curious, who is, who's watching this? Who's patrolling this?
If you remember, Colleen, we were going to put up a camp, we were in the process of putting up a temporary fence.
Oh, I'm well aware.
And then people were adamant, why are you doing this? You're going to have a permit. You're crazy. Tail this thing down. Okay. And we have guidelines from Cook County that says if you're going to have a dog beach or a dog park, it needs to be closed by a fence. The fact that we don't have one at one time, for liability reasons, we have posted a sign that says if you're going to have a dog down at the beach, it needs to be leashed. Should we spend the money to police that? Because I was there today, three dogs, not a single one of them was on a leash. But as I have said before, if people are speeding down the highway at 80 miles an hour and a lot of people are doing it, it doesn't make it right. So this isn't right. I understand that. But are we going to now have to spend dollars to have people police this? I would say no. People go down there, and there is an incident, and their dog is off-leash. We have posted the signs. We have legally done our responsibility given the circumstances.
I would, I would...
Call me. I'll call Cook County. We've talked with the village police department. And they will venture down to the beach and ask people to put their dog on leash.
I guess where I was headed, I'm sorry, I didn't get to finish. But where I was headed was, rather than putting this on ice for a temporary fence, maybe we should move forward because I didn't think it was going to be that expensive. When we looked at it with the Dog Beach Advisory Committee, Mickey, it was not a big expense.
The question is not expense. The question is now the village is involved in the permitting?
I understand.
And we can't decide what is temporary? Because we don't know when the temporary period ends.
I understand.
So the enforcement for those statutes that we perfected in the language, we made it an on-leash-only dog park? Yeah, but the enforcement of that is a police matter.
The meeting next week is regarding the permit process.
Well, that's what I was hoping. I was hoping that maybe we can secure clarity from our village. And part of this is also a desire to let people that don't have dogs have access to Centennial. Because I thought your plan, Costa, was really excellent for your temporary fencing, where people then could go around if they were so predisposed. But thank you for your attention.
No problem. Always happy to hear that. Okay. Are we ready to move to the strategic plan?
Yes.
That would be Kyle, item number 5.4.
Strategic planning is ongoing. We initiated a process early in 2022 to understand where we were given the strategic plan that we were rolling off from the 2017 to 2022 strategic plan, and also identifying what our next steps would most logically be and most appropriately be for the district. Staff sought to understand the options available to the district as far as small, medium, and large, essentially, if you were to simplify to that standpoint. We had a couple different ideas in mind, but saw that it was best to put the brakes on the strategic plan so that we could focus our efforts and attention towards the ongoing Elder Centennial and golf course management projects, still keeping it going in the background. That brings us to right now, where we are going full speed ahead with the strategic planning process. Staff has researched the opportunities available, the options available, and intends to approach the 2023-2028 strategic plan in the following manner. Number one, initiating a community-wide survey that will touch on the interests of the community. I think that is a very important distinction to make. It will not be specific to ongoing projects that are currently under process. It will not be specific necessarily to specific facilities. But it is more, what is the community looking for in a high-level sense so that we have a better understanding of where should we focus our attention for the strategic plan? And where do we need further feedback from the community that we can address appropriately? Executive Director Peterson and I attended the IAPD Legislative Conference in Springfield. And we were very fortunate to hear an individual by the name of Jeff Andresson from Acuity Research present the IAPD survey, giving a great deal of feedback on parks and rec interests, you know, parks and rec trends within a variety of communities throughout the country, as well as specifically within the state of Illinois. It is my intent to reach out to Mr. Andresson and get his feedback of how we can best position this survey. We've made use of the Qualtrics surveying platform, so they've enrolled us out in a very professional manner. We will make it accessible via QR codes, emails. We may go, or rather, we will have it available at different points in the community so that people can pick up a card, complete the survey, all electronically. And then we'll have dashboards available for the review of the results for commissioners and staff alike. Second component of our approach to strategic plan is working with a consultant from GovHR. GovHR participated and facilitated the strategic plan in 2016. That brought us to 1722. I've already made in contact specifically with Chuck Baling, who was the individual from GovHR that oversaw our strategic planning process. It was a highly labor-intensive process on both GovHR, as well as staff and commissioners. And so in my conversations with Chuck, he has made the recommendation, and I share his viewpoint, that given the challenges currently present within our district, it is in our best interest to take a moderate step for our strategic plan so that we can review what is currently in place, identify where we can do more or do better based on that plan, and then improve upon the plan to go forward. This is compared to doing a full reset, fully throughout the plan, put a large financial and personnel investment into it so that we can essentially have a period of stability in the district, execute on some of the real high-level and important needs throughout the district, and better position ourselves for a subsequent strategic plan, master plan, or comprehensive plan, which is something that I think is a great opportunity. Reflecting on the strategic plan that we are rolling off from, two main components contributed to some of our shortcomings, for lack of a better term. Number one, COVID-19 was a huge, or had a huge impact on our ability to achieve some of the visions within that plan. The second piece is there was a great deal of leadership turnover over the course of the past five years. And with that, there's a different perspective, and there's a great, there's a great many opportunities. And so one of the pieces that it appears has not been the highest priority, has been strategic plan. So this is our opportunity to recommit, double down, update, and move forward. Final piece of our approach to the strategic plan would be a focus or advisory group consisting of Winnetka Park District residents so that we can get some feedback on, this is where our plan is pointing towards. This is what we hope to either improve upon or recommit to from our existing strategic plan. Does that resonate with you? Does that work with you as a new community member, as an existing community member? Does that bring as something that would be of use for this plan? So those are the three components. This, I think, is a great approach to make sure that we have an effective and important strategic plan but does not overburden the Park District during a period of major projects. I think we would be very well positioned and a greater level of stability in three to five years to recommit to a master plan and look top-down, everything in between, what can we do and how can we do it better?
Thank you for posting that strategic plan. That is part of the board packet. There's still so much in there that's relevant. It's really interesting reading. So parts of it could have been written yesterday. I think it's really useful. Does anyone else want to say, make any other comments on the strategic plan? It sounds like what we're going to be doing is using the existing plan, which still contains a lot of need, and working with that to update ourselves for...
I think we'll see more thought, and I really feel like we should be having this discussion with the board. The strategic plan is one of the top...
We will.
You will?
Yes.
It's a given.
Well, I mean, my sense is this is an important initiative. We had a plan. We have not executed on the plan, for whatever reasons.
There are some. Yeah, only two some.
Okay. But I see so many exciting things happening in Winnetka, and I love that with their plans and with getting, like, a very high-quality, statistically valid survey. Lots of actionable information, and I think that we might need to maybe broaden, maybe consider other vendors, you know.
I think, I think Kyle has a better price survey. Yes.
Okay, so we do have some questions. So Steve Adams, first question is to you. So I think a park district, is a park district required to have a strategic plan?
Actually, no. There's no legal requirement for a strategic plan.
Okay, so, because if we're saying this is a 2023 to 2028 strategic plan, and part of the strategy, part of the fun to get to a strategic plan is to do a community survey, along with Willmett has done on its long-range planning distinction, people don't seem to be latching on to, but anyway. So by the time you get that survey launched, get results back, my suggestion would be, again, it's not a legal responsibility, but maybe there's a 2023-24 interim strategic plan that can take the best parts of what we would still like to complete from the 2017 to 22 plan and make that an interim plan. So that would be a suggestion I would have.
I have to say, specific to the survey, the survey is, if with board support, is ready to be launched at the end of this month, beginning of June, and it would be live, intended to be live for a course of about four weeks. And we hold all collection opportunities, so we would not have to go through a third party.
I just think it's going to be extremely important that people understand that it's for the long-term plan and not what we're doing right now. Because it might get confused. The second thing is, do you have, are you going to have any board members at Park as part of that committee, or is it just going to be staff and residents?
There will absolutely be board engagement in this process.
Cool. Thanks.
Okay, moving on. 5.5, which is the review commissioners' request to staff spreadsheet. This is our attempt to grapple with the requests that have come into the staff. I don't think we're 100% cooked on this document. I've looked at it. I've thought about it. Right now, it's commissioner view only. There are 27 requests that came in.
You spent a lot of time.
You did. You spent a lot. You did, and I appreciate that.
And I'm sure you're not the only one who knows.
Yes, yes. And it's visible right now to commissioners. And I think we need two additional pieces of information to help me understand. Number one, I think we need a reason, sort of like why, what's motivating this request? Because I think that would be helpful. And then I think we need some staff input, just who on the staff would be assigned to this? Is it inside of our, confirming that in fact it is inside of our real house? That it is our park district matter, not school matter, not a village matter? And that, and that it is not necessarily premature? That it's not something that we're asking about now, that's going to come out in Phase Four or Phase Five of a certain plan being rolled out? So I'd like to revisit this, ask the commissioners all to take a look at this. We're going to add a reason category, and we're going to add some staff input. And we're going to get some sort of estimate about how much time the staff thinks it would take. Then as a board, I think we can look at it in a remote fashion and try and decide what needs to rise to the top. What are the things that need to rise to the top? We know that we've had enormous amounts of requests directly from individual commissioners to staff. We know that we've had staff turnover. It is clear to us in our comments from Adam Simon that a single commissioner is a citizen, period, full stop. So we only have the authority to ask the staff for time if we act as a group. So this is the most efficient way I can think of, to collect the information, to get commissioner input, and to see what bubbles up to relevance, urgency, and ability to be executed. Yes, ma'am?
I worked with Cynthia on this, and again, I'm still trying to quite comprehend. Because what I see is that certain commissioners can walk in, due to their seniority with staff and their knowledge of staff, sit down and talk to them, and get their information immediately. Newer commissioners, and we were the new commissioners, were not accorded that same sort of flexibility. And so I'm trying to understand what this, you know, this spreadsheet is supposed to do. Do I understand correctly that we may only ask staff for information if it is approved by the board and it is on the spreadsheet? Is that where we're headed?
The idea is that if there are tasks that you're going directly to the staff for that are better opined on by your fellow commissioners, it is a priority, it is urgent, and the staff agrees, that's kind of the consensus I'm looking to build. Because I think it's onerous to the staff who wants to answer every question.
We, as a board, work through the executive director. That is how this works. We do not give direction to staff. We meet twice monthly, in the summers once, sometimes more frequently. We work through the executive director. There are officers...
There are officers, and there are committees, and the heads of committees. Officers frequently have interchange with staff and with the executive director. If somebody's assigned to a specific task, such as stormwater, then you may have direct communication with staff. But the ability to direct staff to take an action is, has to come through the executive director. We've been through this, it's in our board policy manual, it is the board's responsibility to work through the executive director. There are many great ideas. There are just so many hours in a day, and each one of our staff members has a full-time job prosecuting the work and providing the services of Park District. So we can't have too many cooks in the kitchen. This spreadsheet is a way for, for each of us to put our ideas onto a piece of paper so they don't get lost, and then allow staff to assess the timeframe and the prioritization. We can meet and discuss it in the committee meetings as to prioritizing these requests. And you'll understand by looking at the spreadsheet, who's assigned to it, where it is in the order of priority, and an anticipated completion date, or when we get to it.
I don't think there's anything bad on here.
No, I think it's a great way to keep track.
Cynthia and Colleen, I don't, I don't object to any of these inquiries, but I, I, we've talked about this several times, both in open and closed, I believe. I've been against this spreadsheet. I think it's, we're wasting time now talking about it. I don't believe it should be the public's time. It should be updating the executive director and the president, or potentially the vice president, whoever that, Christina or Warren, to, to work with the commissioners to set priority on this stuff. I just, I got to tell you, though, I mean, some of this stuff can be answered in a minute. But John's been right. There's 28 items on this list. That's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So I believe that it should go through the executive director and the president, and that's how we figure out how the, how work priority with staff should be.
I'd like to start with a reason, and I'd like to start with a staff, and maybe an idea of how long it would take to complete, and what the staff's comments on that would be, because that's the piece that interests me the most, is what does the staff feel about this particular request? Because they get to decide their own workload. They have a full job already, and so I just want to make sure.
I think there's a difference, though, between requests for specific information and then requests for, like, I would put, you know, financial information that is available in other park districts, that's in a statutory category that we should be able to have available in a different category than we want, you know, the code of design 3D models where we need to expend resources and funds. So.
Each of, I think that nuance can be captured in the reason. Yeah, that's what I'm looking for.
I'd also like to point out that with Kyle's great work, we have Diligent Community, which is a terrific tool specifically designed as platform for park districts such as ours, as libraries of data, internal, external. And as we begin to populate that and become more familiar with how to utilize that, you may find that the resources are there, the informations are there, we should have better board training on how to use Diligent Community, and then staff can begin to fill those buckets with the desired information.
Something to tap there.
I must say, too, I have, I don't think I've ever come to the Park District, other than when I was reviewing vouchers with you, because that was what we needed to do. You do that now? I must say that your presumption that, well, and I don't have much more seniority, maybe a few months, because I was June 20, you guys were.
Twenty one.
Okay, twenty one, sorry.
May 21.
So I don't feel like I can go into Kyle and say, "Kyle, give me this, we're coasting." I, I, I don't, I just.
Never.
So I think this is a start, and thank you for putting the spreadsheet together.
I didn't put it together. They populated it, people populated it with their own request, which I think is great, so I'm struggling to make it useful. So I think we just need a couple adjustments. Last comment on the spreadsheet, and then we'll move on.
It's really about, I have never demanded anyone walked in, I just want to be very clear. I've never walked into any staff member's office and demanded, "I need this and I want it now." I have never done that. I've tried to schedule meetings, and I've always scheduled through the executive director. So that's why I was asking this question about the spreadsheet, because I didn't quite understand. However, I will tell you that I have asked for information that should be readily available in this Park District. It's going on two years now, and I still don't have it. And so when you have something, and it's information that's very pertinent, because it's information as to the basis for the waterfront 2030 plan. We should have had immaculate files on that, and they appear not to be in existence. And so, you know, when you look at something like that, it comes down, and you're a commissioner, and you're having to make very important decisions and vote, and you don't have the underlying information. It's very disturbing. And so what I have come to conclude is that it is a very sad day when a commissioner is forced to, as a resident, have to submit a form. But if that is the way that information will finally come to the commissioner, then we may find ourselves in that situation. I'm still hopeful.
Well, I, as am I. And I'm, because I think we can populate, I think we can populate these files, I think we can get these requests underway, I think we can manage this process. I really think we do. This is the first pass. I think there will be additional passes in the future.
I'm glad to see that I can check.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really, truly.
Item number, we're ready to move on, five point six, okay? 2023 Cherry Street Beach, John, take me.
In 2021, we struck an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Oneeka, specifically the Oneeka Police Department, so that their one point of access to the lake, they don't have beach attendants or lifeguards available to staff Cherry Street Beach. So they approached us with the request for a beach attendant, not a lifeguard, a beach attendant to monitor those going down to Cherry Street Beach, ensure that they're not going into water and/or going to the residents to the north and south. So that process began in 2021. In 2022, in advance of the process, we actually sat down with Chief Hornstein, Commissioner Rapp and I sat with Chief Hornstein to ensure that our staffing, Oneeka Park District's staffing of the beach attendant was in a manner to ensure the best enforcement, if you will, of keeping track of what's going on with the Cherry Street Beach, but also making sure that our colleague was not at risk. So the staffing process, Kyle was terrific in making sure that we had the right people at Cherry Street Beach in 2022. At Commissioner Rapp's request earlier, maybe the last couple of weeks, I contacted interim chief Brian O'Connell to ask what level of reports and/or incidents took place in 2022 with our staffing at Cherry Street Beach. There were no incidents at all, no directed calls to, to the village and/or its call center, which is a call center after hours. The police department had 68 premises, checks will, it's part of their regular assignments during the course of the summer. And we state, they did have two parking incidents, but they were not obviously on the Cherry Street Beach pier, thankfully. He did say that having the Oneeka Park District beach attendant is the reason the village is not getting calls. So I think it works. So it's a, it's a great process. Kyle and I are trading drafts with interim chief Brian O'Connell at this time to ensure that we have the 2023 agreement with the right dates. When we're monitoring the Cherry Street Beach with our colleagues, we also are hiring, again, Selden Security, which we did in 2021, to help us from 8:00 PM to 2:00 AM. I don't think, we've been out there at 2:00 AM, but we might have to try that once, just to see when they do close the gate, but.
The village is compensating us for any cost that we would incur because of this.
Correct. $14 an hour. Kyle's done all the calculations, so I think you meet with the chief, or the interim chief of police next Friday? Next Friday. So we should have a final document before then to essentially get to the, the final agreement with the Village of Oneeka's, well, it's actually with the Oneeka Police Department. It still needs to go to the trustees for a final approval from the Village of Oneeka trustees. So that's a meeting.
Great, thank you. We're moving on to unfinished business. Item number 6.1, discussion of decennial committee on local government. Kyle, all you.
Thank you. We have discussed this previously. I wanted to give an update that the public announcement was released to the Oneeka community, soliciting or advertising the opportunity, or volunteer opportunity for consideration as one of the two community members that would be included on our decennial committee on local government efficiency. The public announcement includes a deadline for submitting an interest or an intent to be considered. The deadline is May Friday, May 19, 2023. We will have all submissions received and reviewed by then for, to inform the selected members Monday, May 22, 2023. And then the first official committee meeting will be Thursday, May 25, following our annual and special board meetings. So far, we have received six expressions of interest, six forms have been submitted for consideration for the committee. The committee is, will be formed by the current sitting board, so as of, or once the new commissioners are, are seated on May 25, they will become part of that committee. It will also consist of the two community members, as well as the executive director and/or appointees determined by the executive director. I think one additional item that I put in your packet is the draft resolution. This resolution was drawn up and shared by IAPD. I spoke with Jason Anflamant at the IAPD Legislative Conference to clarify his recommendation as someone that was involved with the creation, or rather, the facilitation of this new requirement by the state. He would recommend that we do the resolution as soon as possible. We have previously discussed holding off and doing it in later in June, but in the interest of getting it done and making sure all of our boxes are checked, we can go forward with this resolution once we have the new board seated and various officer positions determined. We'll update the resolution and move forward.
Steve, this is probably a question for you. Can you just explain on the 25th, how many meetings we need to have? Because I am.
So the decennial committee?
So, no, no, but we have our regular board meeting.
Regular.
Then we have our annual meeting.
Then we have an annual.
Do we need a regular meeting to conduct regular business with the new board, and then a separate special meeting with the, or can all happen in the?
Decennial is, is a separate meeting.
But the annual meeting have other agenda topics?
We have two meetings planned for the 25th.
Correct.
The regular meeting and the annual meeting. The decennial committee is appointed, but it will convene later.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to convene on that.
So it can be an agenda item for the annual meeting?
Yes.
Correct.
Or does it need to be a separate meeting?
The decennial committee is a separate body, but the statute allows for the decennial committee to meet in the, in, in a regular meeting. So you could have the decennial committee meeting inside the regular meeting, you'd have to do a separate notice for the decennial meeting if you wanted to. Steve, let me try and, really try and be concise here. We've rescheduled our board meeting from June 15 to June 7. We can hold the first meeting of the decennial committing on June 7, thereby meeting the June 10 deadline. So, and not overload the June, the May 25. So we have two meetings in May 25, regular board meeting and the annual meeting. We will appoint members of the committees so that it can convene on the 7 of the decennial meeting, at the regular board meeting. Excellent.
That's fine.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
So am I allowed, I will be a member of the, thankfully, a member of the community, am I allowed to volunteer?
Yeah.
I can do that, right?
Yeah.
Does he need to submit an application?
I don't know. We have to vet you.
Right, I'm gonna make the cut.
I think you have to submit an application.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. Yeah.
We can have more relevance than two. We give a minimum of two.
Minimum of two, yeah. There's some, there's some dynamics with regard to a quorum, how cumbersome it is to get your meetings together, attendance, you have to meet three times, and then we won't, we'll have a certain number of points to accomplish.
We'll get the, get the appointees on May 25, first meeting on the 7, and we can go from there.
Perfect.
Don't do it.
Yeah, excellent.
It wasn't planned.
Six point two, what we've all been waiting for. Costa Caturas, Elder Centennial Review Available Reserves and Financing Plan, actually, we have this gym, right? The gym, sorry, sorry.
Let me start, thank you, Commissioner Coto. So the packet has a memo, and what I'd like to try and do is first talk a bit about the investments made by the Park District, you know, for the last 10 years, just those 10 years. It's a remarkable list of accomplishments by prior boards and prior staff members. It's, it's terrific. Unfortunately, Mary Garrison walked out because she had a hand in some of these things, or be setting the table to get to where we, where we are.
Let me interrupt, sir. Can you get the memo up?
Yes, we can.
So those accomplishments or investments are listed on the second page, and it just highlights those in the last 10 years. We also track, Jim is great through the budget process, as well as splash-and-go meetings, which are every other week. We track the assets that are $5,000 or greater, as well as long-range capitals, to ensure
that we're making changes that might, that might be required. The most recent, maybe the most notable change has been this Zamboni, the mysterious Zamboni that's been on and off the purchasing block, if you will, for a couple of years. So we constantly are tracking those investments that need to be made, repairs that need to be made, and we have a long-range capital schedule that's in the memo for items that are greater than $100,000. So as we, as the board has asked about uses of funds and/or further investments within the Park District, notably Elder Centennial and the golf course, we've now doubled back to make sure we have those funds. We have them within our own operations. The operations in 2018, 2019, 2021, 2020, 2021, and 2022 are on page two. Our net operating income has been fantastic, notably in the last three years, but really last year we had nearly $4.5 million in net operating income. We are not stockpiling, as you know, we're not stockpiling reserves. We are ready to deploy that capital in a thoughtful manner. Jim, in collaboration with the commissioners, or notably Commissioner Seaman, you have a debt schedule, so we have additional capital available, thanks to Commissioner Coto and Commissioner Lussen with our alternate revenue bonds in 2020, 9.050, right? Million. But we have a debt schedule on page five, I believe. You want to talk to where we are, you know, in as far as our debt service schedule?
Absolutely. Thank you, John, for that. Before I do that, I want to just, I've done a couple of the points that you made. The long-range capital plan is the collaboration between myself and business senior leaders. And Costa has a large hand in that with a lot of the equipment, the park maintenance crews, vehicles, heavy equipment. There's a lot of detail that goes into it, and I think they deserve to be recognized for the effort they put in to prepare their budgets, both immediate and long-term. When it comes to the, the debt service that we're currently working with, we have by law the ability to levy up to 2.75% of the assessed property values within Oneeka. Oneeka's a rather affluent community. We could borrow up to $45.7 million. That would definitely extend our leverage, well beyond where we want to be. We currently have a debt load of $20.5 million. It's less than half of what we could borrow. Of that $20.5 million, only $11.455 million of that is applicable to that debt ceiling law that I referenced before. The alternative revenue bonds are exempt from that. Even so, we have chosen as a park district not to exceed where we are with our debt limit, because we want to be sober and diligent about what we're borrowing to make sure we can afford the debt service that we would incur by borrowing the money. We are currently paying an annual debt service of about $1.3 million. Our projections through the next 20 years does not exceed $1.33 million a year from what we've borrowed. So we are on a plan. So we are on a plan to pay that back well within our means. We are currently 25% of what we can borrow by law. We have no plan in the immediate future to exceed that percentage. We're being very, very safe with the money that we have borrowed. Some of our earlier debts, the 2011 and 2012 debt certificates, will be retiring from that debt service by 2027 or 2030 delays. So we have done a very good job of monitoring and maintaining and managing our debt service at this point.
So source of funds, we have nearly $4.9 million from the alternate revenue bonds, again, thanks to Commissioner Coto and Commissioner Seaman, but Commissioner Coto helping us get the $3 million in debt certificates from Wintrust. The recreation fund with unrestricted reserves, Kyle sat down with Jim and walked through what reserves unrestricted could be used to the Elder Centennial project, and what reserves could be used for the golf project. So nearly $2.3 million of the recreation fund's unrestricted reserves are earmarked for Elder Centennial, and the $310,000 in net proceeds from our sale of Library Park within Winnetka Northfield Public Library District, that, those four pieces of the puzzle come to $10.5 million.
And can I, can I interrupt there?
Sure.
There, there's been a lot of comments tonight on next door Winnetka, on emails about $22 million, or even potentially more. And what I tried to communicate at the meeting two weeks ago, we don't have the money. We have, the, the purpose, part of the purpose of this memo is we have $10.5 million. So all this talk about $22 million isn't real. Yes, it was a cost estimate on a grand plan. Well, we don't have the money. We only have $10.5 million. That's with a few constraints, too.
True.
Golf we'll talk about later. There should be no more discussions about, or points or comments about 22 million, or emails about $22 million. We don't have it. And as I tried to point out in the last meeting, we're not going to generate enough excess cash in the next two years to have anything more than $10.5 million. We have $10.5 million to invest in Elder Centennial. That's all we have. And again, there's a few assumptions around golf that allow us to come up with that number. So thank you, John.
Sure, you want to finish?
I just, I want to add one minor thing. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we have restrictions on reserves for each of the funds that we hold. It's 25% of operating expenses. So we're not cutting everything to the bone. We're maintaining the appropriate level of reserves restricted for those units, and we're taking excess reserves over that restricted amount. So that's a credit to the recreation people for generating it, a credit to the parks people for saving it and value engineering it, and that brings us to this.
No other enterprise fund, right?
No. All right. Do, do, do you have more to present?
If I may.
Please do, because there's a lot, there's a lot that's been brushed over. It needs to be revisited. This is a very thoughtful, detailed memorandum to the public. Please take the time to understand, this Park District is in outstanding financial condition due to the good stewards at the, at the staff level, and we have been responsible with the utilization of our assets, and I can't emphasize that enough. There's so much misinformation out there. So please proceed.
I would like to touch on something that Director Peterson said. We are not borrowing from other enterprise funds to supplement the Elder Centennial project. We cannot do that. We're not taking from tennis, we're not taking from ice, we're not taking from paddle, we're not taking from special rec, we're not taking from any other funds. We are allowed to take from recreation because the beaches fall under the recreation purview. It's, it's an appropriate use of the excess resources. It's the only reason we're taking it from recreation. And we can take it from corporate because that is how the corporate fund is structured. That's all we're doing. We're doing well within our legal right to do so. But we're not borrowing from any other enterprise funds. Those reserves are safe for their own capital needs down the road.
Do you want to comment on the work, Kyle, that you did to ensure that there's still reserves, repairs to be deployed on other projects, right? I think, Kyle, you have a key project that we're trying to get done in 2025.
Correct. We're looking forward to 2025 when the Skokie Playfield turf replacement is scheduled to happen. We've been very fortunate that we have a fantastic parks and maintenance staff that has allowed it to survive as long as it had. And if, you know, a rainy day situation happens where reserves are needed elsewhere beyond any project that we know about currently, I'd like to believe that we could stretch that project even a little further, but it's, that, that project is coming, and we are well-planned for it.
Well, we also have projects for the Tower Road Beach Playground and the Elder Lane Playground, as well as irrigation systems, lighting protection, all of which is budgeted over the next few years, and we have resources to cover that, yeah.
We have the capital.
Let me, allow me to please rephrase this. On page four of the memorandum, we have taken the time to delineate all capital expenditures planned over greater than $100,000 for the next six years. The Park District, in fact, has identified every asset greater than $5,000, tracks its useful life and replacement costs for major capitals to repair. So you will see those listed on this spreadsheet. Take the time. This team has done a great job to monitor our future needs, and they have properly budgeted the resources to undertake those, be it the turf field, or the replacement of the roof, or a new Zamboni, or the replacement of playgrounds. I also want to revisit the list of projects that this Park District has accomplished because it's not small. This Park District is very well managed. I'm not taking credit for it. It's the, it's the executive director, it's the staff. We have a great team. Post has been 20, 21 years?
Three.
23 years? He is an outstanding resource for this community. Prior commissioner identified animals for each of us. I won't tell you what she called me, but she, but she labeled Costa the Clydesdale. He is the Clydesdale of the Park District. He does an enormous job, pulls an incredibly heavy load. The Skokie Playfield renovation, I won't go through the details, but they're listed here. Hubbard Woods Park renovations, Dwyer Park renovations, Tower Road Beach renovations, Lloyd Beach renovations, Maple Beach renovations, Nick Corwin redo, Indian Hill Park Playground, the new Parks Maintenance Center, the new golf maintenance center, the AC Nielsen Tennis Center improvements, the platform tennis, four new tennis courts, two of them which are just being completed, the Green Bay Trail repairs, the Crow Island Woods restoration, the Village Green Playground renovation, and all the interpretive signs. This is just, this is just a list, and we have an ongoing list of repairs, and we have the resources to complete those. We have over 22 million in reserves. We have a AAA bond rating because we have 22 million in reserves, but because we've been amassing those funds to be able to invest in our beaches. Respectfully, the golf course is a big number. The golf course, over the 10 years, from 2010 to 2019, the golf course was being subsidized by corporate and rec to an average of $337,000 a year. Golf is not a great business. It loses money. We struggle with golf because the golf course is so flat, and those spring rains, the same spring rains that started in 2013 to fill up Lake Michigan, they inundated our golf course in the spring, made many unplayable days. That's why golf was losing money. We have a flat golf course, and, and candidly, there's nothing we can do event short of what's being done right now. So we're very grateful to collaborate with the village, making major investments. We're putting 2.3 million, taking out of Chen and Rec, this year, 2.3 million is going into the golf course. There's a bunch of misinformation out there that we're taking 1.9 out of golf and giving it to the, that's crazy. That's crazy. That's, that's nonsense. 2.3 million this year, we're losing, we're losing, our operations because the course is closed, projected to lose, what, $750,000 this year?
Well, one, three.
$300,000? And next year as well? We are subsidizing golf to sustain it. But when we come out the other side, we're going to have a golf course that's improved. It's going to drain because we're taking clay out of the pond that we're making, all the major pond enhancements just to provide the stormwater storage. It's going onto the golf course so we can crown the fairways, improve the drainage, put in the, put in the continuous cart paths. So now, even if it rains, the course is going to drain, the carts can be used, and we won't lose lost days to weather. So there's a great deal of thought. Mickey has been so, so instrumental in guiding this golf course to profitability. Kemper now, we brought in Kemper, we brought in their team of experts to give us the, the expertise to manage. Yeah, Liv Jacobson of the Golf Course Design. This, this Park District has been very well managed. I'm sorry that so much oxygen is sucked out of the room by Elder and Centennial, but please know that we are in outstanding financial condition. Do pay attention to this memorandum. There's a, there's a lot of great work. Great credit goes to Commissioner Seaman, Commissioner Coto, for availing themselves of very low interest debt when it was available. So that's why we're sitting on 10 million, seven of which came from those bond issues. The rest, excess revenue. We were also fortunate, you know, COVID hit, everybody thought it was going to be horrible for the Park District. We cut staff because we thought, oh gosh, COVID's going to lock down. Everybody stayed home. Everybody signed up for camp. Everybody came and played golf. That's why our revenue surged during COVID. So we were short-staffed and overworked, and this team performed remarkably. So one point, what are we averaging, over 1.7 in excess for the past three years? That's why we're up to 10 million in reserves. This Park District's in great financial shape because of the hard work of our staff and the prudent decisions of the board. We have 10.5 that we can responsibly allocate to the beaches, already accounting for the investment to be made in golf.
This is, this is about, this is about transparency. I know there's also a lot of comments about transparency, and I, listen, we're not perfect. I'm certainly not. The 2023 Budget Book, this is an unbelievable book. Please, if anybody's listening, I know a lot of people make comments and they have a busy life and they leave, I get it. I would too. But this thing is on our website. It goes through everything that you would want to know from a financial standpoint with the 2023 budget and beyond, because it has the long-range capital plan. It has so much information, it has, I believe, does it have debt repayment schedules?
Yes.
It's got a lot of information. And there might be some people saying, why do you take out debt? You cannot reserve for a 100-year project. No one can do that. You can reserve for 10 years, for five years, but we've got a project at Elder Centennial that 50, 60? You just can't reserve for that many events and say, okay, we're going to build it. You have to borrow debt, and we were fortunate enough to have two debt deals in 20 and 22 at extremely low interest rates, 2.2 odd million bucks. So, a lot of great information. The last point, we're not taking a dime from the golf course. We are investing millions of dollars in that god-awful business, but we got Kemper. 2.6 million bucks of cash given to that fund in the last 10 years up until 2020. And thanks to Matt Johnson and Costa?
Yep.
And the golf team and John, we were able to accumulate about $1,250 of reserves in that golf fund. Thank God. Because they're blowing through all of it this year. We're investing 1.2 million of major losses. It's a, it's a substantial investment in the business. So we are not taking anything from golf. We are investing heavily into golf. So I'm, I'm done with my three minutes. Thank you so much. Read the memo, it's a great memo, and read the budget.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I think we have moved through the Elder Centennial Review Available Reserves and Financing Plan. I'd like to move on to item 6.3, Elder Centennial Discuss Value Engineering and Scope, Modification Recommendations from Consultants and Staff, and this is all Costa.
Christina, thank you. What was diligent work, and we're trying to get out to the community, and my apologies for the haste, or the timing on this, in our haste to try to get this out. Wanted to share a diagram with the board of what that looks like and what we added to the park packet. Kyle, if you can bring that to rendering. As discussed before, and as we've been, you know, trying to do our due diligence, not only listening to the community, but also understanding our financial picture, our first objective was to design this the best way that we saw fit for the community and for the long haul, hence the 21 and change million dollars of phases one, two, and three previously presented. That was an all-in plan for everything, including multiple contingencies and multiple areas of mobilization for the site to be built in three different phases. Working with our consultant team, understanding the dynamic, understanding our financial bandwidth, and trying to get the best implementation plan that we can to preserve our beaches, to stop the erosion, to build back better than we have it for the long haul, we, we rolled up our sleeves and we're putting forward the plan that you see in front of you this evening. This plan here has taken into consideration a couple of different fronts. Most notably, you'll notice, on the north side of Elder, the bluff location that is now on, it's untouched, the access road going down from the parking lot has been removed. The lower pier, excuse me, the lower concrete ramp section that goes out into the beach to gain that access has been removed. We took a harder look at the geometry and trying to realize our abilities to repurpose and reuse the existing accessway on the south side of Centennial. We knew the limitations of what that was before, but our abilities to invest into that section and demolish it and build back something that we can sustain our efforts to was where we had the most savings on this project. You'll see in conjunction with this, there's some smaller elements that have changed on the lakefront itself at Elder. The design of the walkway is now determining as part of the catch basin four, manhole four for the stormwater as it's needed, part of the ongoing discussion with the village. We're going to continue to move forward with our plan and our design here as shown in the following instances. You'll see on the right-hand side, first and foremost is the Roble mound structures on the north side of Elder, the, or south side of Elder, and then the small gumball, if you will, on the outcropping stone at Centennial. Once again, being mindful of the discussions to create and sustain a 235-foot dog beach to the south, creating swimming not only at Centennial, but as discussed previously at the last meeting, combined use at the Elder Lane site. So now we have two swimming beaches and a single dog beach that can be used as they need to function.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
There was a comment earlier about the size of the parking lot, I believe. To me, that parking lot looks unchanged. I, I recall it always being unchanged. Is that factual?
That is factual. Through our current plan sets that we provided to date, it has not changed. Part of the lakefront master plan, there is discussions of improving that, pulling that parking lot from where it is existing further to the west, creating more green space, but that takes in consideration the 261 property exchange or the Park District securing that site, which, as it did with this plan, does not include that.
Right, okay. So there is no plan for an expansion of the parking lot?
The closest thing you're going to get to an expansion of the parking lot is the repaving of the existing lot as it's known today. Once it gets, you know, it's in, it's in pretty rough shape now. We've deferred that a few, few months years now, but we're going to put that back better as, as we finish off the job. That's just part of that. As we continue walking through the site, as I was suggesting, the south access road down to the beach is now widened, and it's increased in order for us to curate this as a land-based job still, but then be able to service this as well. The need for future equipment, access to the beach, and access our facility is now taken in consideration. We're still not able to achieve ADA access, true ADA access from the upper bluff down to Elder Lane Beach House, but the ADA access as proposed... but the ADA access as proposed in this initial phase for Centennial is existing as before. The previous plans as rendered for Centennial compared to this, for the most part, they're unchanged. There's a few small microscopic changes as far as access and egress for the dog each, configuration of the gates, and the alignment of the steel, but the heights and elevations previously shown for Centennial stay the same. We are using our existing infrastructure that sustained the local, or excuse me, that sustained the high lake levels and building upon that. We're putting back in a pathway that you can get ADA access all the way down to the beach level or to the boardwalk level and then be able to build on that in future durations of Phase 2 and Phase 3 as funding and as permitting allows. But to continue back to Elder, I'd like to point out, the relocated stormwater is still proposed. That exit is where it is currently proposed where it was before. The stone return on the breakwater is now full breakwater all the way back. It doesn't stop halfway where the ramp steel bisected the breakwater to curate that concrete ramp. We are looking at a stone structure to come all the way back in. That stone structure at height elevation will start at an elevation of 585, excuse me, 585 on the eastern edge and ramp only a single foot to land at 586 on the western edge, abutting the existing steel. There is the raised elevation of the platform that's needed at 589, and that is to make it work in conjunction with the beach house to curate that plateau where it's all at one level. There is the ramp that proceeds down to the beach from here and then the access point for the stormwater manhole four as it was suggested here. We need to maintain that structure and that facility, so we need to be able to circulate a vehicle to be able to clean out any blockage that there may be in the future. The south arm here, as it's shown previously, the nub, as it was called before, the outer groin, has grown. We did armor this with stone all the way back. The elevation of where it was previously at 583 was not changed, and we're bringing that back to an elevation of 585. Once again, basically the same height of the existing Elder Pier. We were very mindful in what we heard from the community about the views and vistas. When you're down at beach level, the topography of the sand will once again fill back in and be built up where you can actually enjoy those views and vistas. The elevation of the boardwalk area directly west of the toe of the shore will be an elevation of 589. So you're already going to be four feet above to be able to view out unimpeded north and south of both structures. So the views will be unimpeded as they were before, and you'll be able to continue to enjoy the wonderful lake views that Lake Michigan has to offer. As we continue down, we still have the staircase to proceed through, so we did not lose thought of the access that people want to utilize to be able to walk the beaches. So putting in the staircase to the north, we've shifted that back west to appropriate distance above the ordinary high watermark, so that ordinary high watermark. So this way it would be able to be engaged and utilized for the, basically, the life of the system and hopefully during the high and low water events, as well as access through. As you continue down to Centennial, once again, you'll be accessing the beach through the walkway that we're changing, and you'll still be able to traverse the beach through there. I apologize, apparently I have shaven hands. As you walk through the beach and you get down to that boardwalk level, there's a set of stairs that allows you to walk uninterrupted to south of Centennial. And currently, where the staircase is shown for the 205 permit application that was in and approved per the IDNR, that staircase has been moved back to the ordinary high watermark. So the ability for you to continue walking south of Centennial is improved upon based on the review from the IDNR and what came back with their findings for that individual's permit. You're going to be able to walk unimpeded, as I suggested, and out of the dog beach area. The green line, as it was shown before, is showing the fencing that would be put in and erected as part of that. The fencing to the south would be, we would reutilize the existing steel groin that is out there, putting the fencing on top of that to make it more stable and allow us to be able to manage that better, as well as putting new steel sheet piling in here to the north of the Centennial site to be able to meet our goal in our heights elevations to not only have the fencing to secure the site, but also the protective wave action on the south side of the north beach to go ahead and let that beach grow by design. The fill volumes have been calculated, and those are part of our cost estimate. I will note, as in the packet as well, is the costing for this project. The cost, as it's shown here in this Phase 1 redesign under the VE Value Engineering Review, is broken down to the following breakdowns. When we look at, excuse me, Elder by itself without any contingencies, we're looking at a total of $6,336,744. The contingency of 15% brings that total to about $7.3 million for that. The stormwater element as part of that, we did pull it out from the base project, just so we understand the cost differential. It's approximately $2.5 million as it's currently proposed. Their 15% contingency brings that up to about $2.9 million. When we look at Centennial and to build out Phase 1, we are looking at, once again, without contingency, about another $2.6 million. About $400,000 of contingency at 15% brings us to roughly $3 million. The project all-in with, without stormwater and out contingency is $8,966,506, bringing that total to $10,311,000 with contingency. If we bring in the stormwater element for that as well, brings our total to $13,211,207. Once again, these are based on engineering's probable costs of construction based on the information that we have to date. This information will be able to be tightened up based on soil borings that we'll commit to and complete on the beach level, based on information that we have from that, based on further information that we'll get from other cost of projects that are currently being bid to understand where the marketplace is. We are projecting this, if approved by the board at a future meeting, that this has the potential to be an early 2024 construction. So we would actually look to those construction facts, and those have been factored into our cost estimates now for that potential construction date. That's where we have the project thus far, and I think that the project team and all parties that have been involved on this did a great job to take a look, a harder look and a deeper dive on all the elements of the project to try to bring this back to what is not only appropriate, but well within the means of the park district can do. This time, I'd like to open up to any questions that the board might have, whether it be the merits of the project plan or the cost estimates.
Thank you. Thank you for that work. I know you did it under speed requirements, and I appreciate it. I thank you for posting it, thank you for sharing.
Of course, and just reiterate, it's not a one-man show. There's many hours from many consultants and many team members put into this, so I just.
Matt Wright, Matt Wright.
That's part of the group. Correct.
Okay.
This question?
Go.
Yes. Can we go back to the rendering place?
Of course.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, please.
First of all, I want to thank you, Costa. I want to thank Matt Wright too, because I think, you know, this shows that we are listening to our public. We're making some improvements here. This is great. I'm a slow learner, so help me out here. At the toe of the bluff, where we see B, we're at 585 elevation, is that correct?
The toe of the stone is going to be at 586.
Oh, 586, okay.
One foot slope to 585.
So it'll go down into the lake at 585.
Five foot, correct.
Correct.
Over the duration of the 200.
I get very confused with this, so if people ask me, so I'll make sure I get this correct.
Sure.
When we go over to the little nub on A.
A for Elder, this one here?
Yes, uh-huh. At the toe of the bluff, we're at 585, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we go out to 583?
We taper down to 583, correct.
Okay, and then if I understand, the boardwalk is going to be at 589?
Yep.
Is that correct?
The boardwalk across, so G and portions of the ground here, which is the boardwalk, are going to be at 589. And then there is a 10-foot wide ADA ramp slope that goes down to the beach, and that's going to allow us to be able to bring tractor-wheeled machines down to the beach to work on it.
Going to A, the new stone, the armored stone that we're putting out?
We're continuing down through there.
Do I understand what we are doing is building that on the groin that exists there, is that correct?
We are utilizing the existing steel to help capture the sand and protect the south side of the Elder Lane Beach, so we can bring in sand and then be able to retain sand, so we have a sound at work.
Because that was one of the problems when we went from boat to swimming beach. And the height, again, is 585 going down 583?
Correct. I will note with those elevations, those structures don't provide the same shore protection as higher elevation structures do. So that was one of the concessions that we looked at to understand. The elevation of 589 through here, and then on the backside where the wave wall would be at at 592, no, 591, excuse me, is on the back wall, that is done to protect the, basically, erosion and the bluff, no matter what stormy fan would come through. And that would be similar to what you see with the Gabian baskets beyond the steel elevations at both Elder and Centennial in its current design.
Okay, and again, for dummy here, on the revetment, originally it was proposed to be steel sheet pile that went, you know, where?
Through here?
No, heading, heading south along the bluff.
I'm sorry, through here?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
What is, how are we protecting the bluff now?
That is still the same, that means enough is that it's still new steel being driven to create that.
Down, okay. As you looked at this, did you also consider hypothetically leaving, this is not hypothetical, leaving the stormwater pipe where it is and not doing armored stone breakwaters just for the purposes of not knowing where we are with 261 Sheridan? I guess my concern is, is if we ultimately acquire 261 Sheridan, then there's going to be cost, I would assume, to remove A and to go with the horizontal breakwater, the T.
Give her the pointer.
So what, if I understand, Colleen, this stone here is suggesting that if we acquire 261, it's a misuse of dollars and we'll have to pay to move these grounds?
No, I'm not saying misuse, I'm just wondering, you know, how much we're talking about for that and whether for the purpose of listening to everyone who's coming saying, please get Elder open, and, you know, not knowing where we are with 261, did you also explore, this kind of goes back to the August 25th presentation where you did the Elder 1 option?
Sure.
And looking at that as something we could do temporarily while we waited to see where we were? Have you looked at that at all?
We have, we did not further that design from August when we did the Option 1 there. Our goal here was to make sure that we listened to what we could do. We took it, we heard about the improvements here to try to keep the bluff land pristine.
Understood.
Don't develop it, keep it open, keep it passive, if you will. So we heard and listened to that. The ability to repurpose this stone here into the offshore groin as it would be for future design in Phase 3 or even in future design of build-out of Phase 2 gives us flexibility because we already own the stone and it's onsite. It's much cheaper to move the stone than to have it delivered. So by having it onsite, we can use that. We always knew that, and we have infrastructure that is failing, and we wanted to make sure, as our priority one was, is to make sure that we build back the bluff and make sure we sustain our hard edge, if you will. And that's what the steel is doing through here. The Gabian baskets that have failed in, under high-lake conditions, put this facility at risk along with potential erosion control through here and this zone here that's unprotected. Those are now protected in this example, or in this draft design and allows us to remove and relocate the stormwater appropriately. Once again, improvement on that as well, creating a better beach overall by design.
And the cost of the addition of the stone on the south?
This portion here?
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't say that number was around $90,000, give or take, but I can get that number firmed up and get back to a 100% certainty.
Cindy, do you have any questions or comments?
What is the height elevation of the little popcorn ball?
Gumball.
The gumball, that's what we're going to call it.
Yeah, the elevation here is 583. And then it tapers down from 587, which is the height of this improvement, down to that 583. That's, once again, allows us to build back the beach here and sustain this effort in this first step, but also sets the foundation for future improvements to have our pier or our packy walkway that would go out into the lake as part of that second design, which would have breakwater, which that new breakwater could include.
Is that going to be a lookout point?
Currently, it is not. It's just a stone's top, so it's an 11-foot wide stone, three-stone top that's there. That is not designed in this iteration to be explored or utilized as a lookout point.
Mickey?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Good job of value engineering.
Really good job.
Just kidding.
Really good job. Oh, excuse me, Warren. Yeah, I see Warren, yeah, David.
Listen, I think it's, we got 10 and a half million bucks assuming we don't dump more money into the golf course. That's it, and that's always been it. So, thank you to our consultants and Costa, John, for listening. I think it's a, again, another dramatic change in this nearly one-year period since we're drawing the last permit. There's some things that I would suggest that we maybe refine a little bit, but I'll put it on the spreadsheet and maybe we can talk. I don't know.
To that point, you, this is a design concept. Once we get into the design drawings and be able to really define this, there's going to be small tweaks here and there, elevations, heights and so forth. They're going to be marginal, at best, you know, six inches plus or minus, but that's when we can really make sure all the geometry works and we can take it to that next step. But we need direction to move forward with, and that's what we're looking to get here, hopefully soon.
For me, thank you. There are three types of erosion that we need to address in Lake Michigan. There's bluff erosion, beach erosion, and there's lakebed downcutting. Suzie and Don probably remember 1987. 1987 was the all-time high. October, it exceeded 583. So for four months of the year, September through December, 1986, it stands as the all-time high. Eight months, those first eight months are now belong to 2020. The bluff eroded at Elder, the bluff eroded at Centennial. Harza Engineering prepared plans in '87 that were implemented, thankfully, in '87. But you can see from those plans that those steel sheet piles, the 135 or so feet with the north of Elder and the full span of Centennial saved those parks. And there was fill placed behind it, and they regraded, and they put the channels, there's concrete channels under it. And there are Gabian mattresses or blankets that go up the slope from there, providing additional protection from what was designed at 580 and a half, 588 and a half, was built closer to 589. The Gabian blankets take it up to about 592. That's the level of protection. That has served us very well through this high-water period. What did perform as well were the Gabian mattresses on the lakebed in front of Elder, the Gabian baskets that typically would have the 30-year, 25, 30-year life expectancy. Those started to break apart, the mattresses started to break apart. So we're vulnerable between the Elder, you know, where the Elder sheet pile stops, and all the way down to 261 Sheridan. That's the most vulnerable part. and all the way down to 261 Sheraton. That's the most vulnerable part. The community has spoken. They, the community has told us that they value vistas over the beach. So our only way to protect the bluff is through the steel bulkheads. So it was Matt Wright who came back and said, look, if you're at 585, you'll hold some sand, but you will not prevent that major, major storm event. It'd need to be much higher to address that wave action. Lloyd is much different. Lloyd, we did in one fell swoop. Lloyd has the benefit of a 400-foot-long concrete and steel pier that protects that northeast. And further north than that, we've got this 600-foot-long village pier that further breaks those major storm events from the northeast. So Lloyd is all stone, no steel. That's why we got it done for $6 million bucks, because we already had a monstrous improvement up there. We are listening to the community. We're lowering the stone. Stone's better than steel. It does, it absorbs wave energy, it dissipates it, it holds sand better. And it's, it's just a better approach to managing the wave energy. Doesn't reflect that wave energy. For an example of that, go to Tower. Everybody understands how danger it is, dangerous it is on the north side of the Tower Pier, especially when those waves come in and they reflect off that and you get that scouring action and the, you get that undertow. If we're going to have swimming at Elder, we need to line that steel so that we don't have that same issue there. So there's a lot of thought. This credit goes to Matt Wright for saying, hey, I think we can get down. We have to widen that path. It's going to get obliterated in the way. But we can build it and we can do away with all that. If we're not, we still, as Costa said, we still have to get access to the storm sewer. Storm sewer relocation is number one. It's a 75-year-old improvement. It's failing. And if you look historically, there was a major improvement made in 1947. That was the storm sewer. Forty years later, major, major improvement with the steel bulkheads at Elder and Centennial. And here we are 36 years later, looking, replacing that storm sewer and linking the steel bulkheads between the south end of Elder to protect and to establish the platform for additional maintenance. But it's something we will not have to revisit for the next 75 to 100 years. These are major, major, once-in-a-lifetime, truly once-in-a-lifetime investments. Gabian baskets, Gabian blankets, they work, they're temporary. But we've already established a steel bulkhead. It's the professional recommendation from Matt Wright to link that, continue it. It's a long-term investment. This is coming down to basic infrastructure. Storm sewer, steel bulkheads, access to the storm sewer. In the process, we gain that boardwalk. We're keeping the elevation low. The steel bulkhead right now, 588.8, 588.9. The first floor of the existing Elder beach house is consistent with that. That's where that boardwalk elevation has always been planned. So we're building upon what we have, making prudent investments in infrastructure. And then to address ADA, there's one handicap accessible parking space at the bottom of Elder. That constitutes ADA access for Elder. That, if we have the ability to expand and get a second space down there, terrific. Ideally, in the future, we would acquire 261 Sheraton and we would link the boardwalk so we can have a continuous ADA accessible path. That's what this plan sets up for. The next couple of weeks, you'll see Phase Two, Phase Three. Those are aspirational. But we can't, can't not address what is the potential in the future. But we do need to address the immediate concerns. We were lucky. Everything held, but we saw damage. You need to address the damage during low water period and not wait till the water comes back, because it will. ADA access at Centennial, it was said that we have ADA access at Centennial. We don't. We have handicap parking spots and the upper-level loop meets ADA standards. The minute you start to go towards the mid-level bluff landing, which in my opinion is the best spot, it's so triangle, that's not ADA accessible. Far too steep. We've addressed that since day one by recontouring that path to bring it down in an ADA accessible route. And then we've extended it down to the boardwalk elevation at the only place in One Eka, because the bluff is low and the beach is long, that we can have one continuous path without a bunch of switchbacks to get down in the most cost-effective manner to that boardwalk elevation. I'd love to see a viewing platform between the Dog Beach and the People Beach. That, that is in our aspirational plans, but you need to get there first to provide ADA access. So this is the, this is the basis for the future. Makes prudent investments in infrastructure that will serve us for the next 75 to 100 years.
Last question.
We have, coming, again, I call it A. From Elder.
Center.
The center, there we go. As we head south, these are stairs where I see the arrows. That's a stair?
Right, yeah, there's a staircase down from the concrete to the beach level.
Would it be possible to make a ramp there? Because I'm thinking, you know, if we're, if we're focused on ADA accessibility.
Yeah, I mean, I'll answer it succinctly as I can. That existing steel, according to survey, is five, six feet north of the property line. So we're able to go to the other side of the existing steel and put a staircase down? That, that satisfies our requirement to allow continuously accessible beach. We don't have the length to go out to the lake in an ADA accessible ramp. It would be, A, it would be inundated, B, it'd be so long, you'd be out in the water.
It's not where I was headed. These stairs, we've listened to a lot of our elderly as they come in, and I'm one of the elderly. And they talk about, you know, going up and down the stairs and how hazardous it is. I was wondering, instead of having stairs, would there be a way to just have a ramp?
I think Warren's saying the greater the ramp is too steep. It's going to be too steep.
The existing boardwalk elevation's 589.
Yeah.
The beach is down at 582.
Understood.
So you get seven feet to transition.
Understood, but I'm also thinking, I'm people, but I don't have any trouble in Centennial going down into the lower elevation. And believe it or not, I've seen many, not many, but I have seen wheelchairs going right on down too, because they want to look and see the view. I agree with you, Warren. That's the most beautiful part of Centennial. I know nothing, I'm just throwing out an idea here. These stairs are treacherous. I guess one of the things we could talk about would be putting railings on the.
The stairs that are being positioned here, Colleen, are more traditional tread width, tread height. They're not stone steps that are going up. They're a traditional staircase that will have hand railings for you to get up.
Great, thank you.
So that would be similar to what we're showing here and continuing to have that access point through. They're not the stone, as you, all right, you might.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Last one more question?
Make it a short one.
What I realized, we're enjoying a design that is, is such a departure from what we saw and voted on last month, that I want to make sure that I not only understand it, but anyone who might be listening tonight fully understands it. Looking at our northern, the northern boundary here, we talked at one time about having a viewing platform. And I know everyone's going to scream about cost. But we don't have any 3D virtual rendering because we're still doing design. People want to know what they're going to be able to see. And I guess I just have a question as to whether we could put some sort of rail platform on, on that breakwater so, so people could go up and look.
Isn't it on the boardwalk, though?
Isn't it, isn't it? So the section right here of the boardwalk, this is going to be at an elevation of 589. So this is going to be the northern limit of the boardwalk where an individual will be able to stand essentially centerline of the breakwater and to be a lookout. That elevation is three feet higher than the top of the stone. So you're going to be elevated plus whatever your vantage point is, depending on your height, will put you out at a vantage point to see beyond that. The ability to walk the staircase up and over, there is a flat part on top of the stair where the center stone is, that's approximately 11 feet wide. So there will be an opportunity here where there's going to be a centerline area that will be elevated that an individual could stand down there and see and enjoy vistas from that vantage point too. But it's not a formal designated outlook, overlooked pier, whatever you want to call it, as will be had in there at one time.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Not at all. Not at all. Not at all. It's good, it's good to get the data points that you want.
My sense is that many of you have already seen this.
No.
So, but that's why.
Well, we saw, well, he sent, Costa sent the email.
He sent the email.
Yeah, that's the first time I saw it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
We're all in the same page.
This is, this is Matt Wright.
Yeah.
This is Matt Wright giving guidance. And remember, to be, to be clear, the motion passed at the last meeting was to send the consultants back to do the VE, which they did.
Correct. Matt Wright, I think, from my limited exposure, is a very fine civil engineer. I really do. And what I like about him is I think he tells you what he thinks. Not often what certain people may want to say, but I think he, he tells it like it is. And I appreciate that.
He will be here on the 25th to present and answer questions.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we can move on.
Just, just for the cost, I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the soft costs. So we should add those to the cost spreadsheet?
Yeah.
So that we know when we're comparing to the 10 and a half, that we're, you know, where we are, all in.
Moving on to 6.4, Elder Centennial Review First Draft of Resolution Regarding Elder Centennial. Do you want to take comments?
I, for those of you who have gone on the website or done your board homework, there's a draft resolution. It contains a lot of historical information. It contains a lot of factual information. And it lists the motions that passed that led us to where we are. And it provides the basis for going forward. I don't think we want to, I'm happy to take input tonight. My suggestion is that to the board members, there's a lot there that we would consolidate comments. Steve, a lot of credit goes to Steve Adams for putting this together. Like the board member comments to come in to JP, myself, Steve. And Steve will consolidate all those. If we can get those in by Monday, the weekend plus Monday, by midnight Monday, so that Steve can consolidate ideally, we get this pulled together and get another draft out so we can have a couple of turns before the 25th.
Monday's thanks.
I have a proposal. Under 4.2 of our policy manual, the two commissioners can request a special meeting. And my proposal, if there's another commissioner that would like to join me on this, is that we schedule a special board study session to sit and formally work through this document. I, I want, I can't see counsel over there, so I'll just say hi. I can see that months of work have gone into this. And to give commissioners 48 hours and then a weekend, in my opinion, perhaps may not be adequate time for a document like this.
Let me ask a question of Warren. Excuse me one second. Let me ask a question of Warren. How many turns of this do you anticipate? Two?
Steve? Yeah, I think that's right.
So you'll get two bites at the sample, not one?
I don't think that's nearly adequate, unless I tell you why.
What time period are you contemplating? Because you'd like to, you'd like to, what's your?
So I've, I've said it for nearly, you know, since the beginning of the year. The purpose of this document is twofold. It's to document everything that we've done and studied and to present the facts. But it's also now intended to address the village requirements. Embedded within here are answers to the village requirements because they passed their ordinance in January. So.
So you're looking for.
So the expectation is that because this board has been so involved, invested in this design, and that I don't believe it's fair for other board, for new commissioners to be able to try to absorb and come up to speed, I think it's incumbent upon this board to act on this resolution on the 25th. It doesn't mean that other boards can't undo, redo, modify, amend, but this board should have the opportunity to address this resolution.
So our ultimate end deadline would be May 22nd, let's say. So it's not necessarily the next 24 hours. I would, rather than do it in a meeting, I think it's more efficient. I think it's more authentic. I think it's more precise to send in written comments.
I was interrupted, so I will continue. As a commissioner, I would like to schedule a special meeting. So we all sit together and we go through this document. We prepare for it. There are many things that are missing from this document that need to be added. One of them, the technical exhibits are not, not here, obviously. Because it's the first draft, I understand that. But also, there are other exhibits that I would think before we could even begin to approve this. Because when I see a finding is a fact, something like this, when we, the boarders are voting and approving this, we are more less also solidifying any sort of judicial review, which on the executive session that was released on April 28th last year, he said, one of the purposes of this is to protect us from any sort of third-party litigation. And, and I will speak out of, out of turn as someone who used to practice law. I don't represent, we have part counsel. But for that to be effective, this document needs to be ironclad. It can't have any chinks in it. And so it is for that reason that I am recommending that we, we schedule a special board meeting. We could do it during the day if it's convenient for people, for, let's say, next Friday. I don't know if there is a, a second. Is there any other commissioner who would second that?
I'd be willing to second it because I think that this is definitely a lot to go through. There are not exhibits. I certainly feel like.
I think.
Let me, let me speak to the exhibits.
Yeah.
The exhibits are documents that have already been produced. They were, they were produced. They're, they're referenced in there and they will be attached. They are the boards, they are the documents, they're all the other studies. So it's all the stuff that we've already been through, just point to. Costa can probably address some of that, too.
I, I'm going to, this isn't a voting meeting, right? This is a committee of the whole meeting. And I would say this, I would like people to go through this on their own and submit their written comments first. I think it's the most authentic. I think it's the most efficient. I think it's the best way for Steve to see what your thought process is. We can then all look at the second draft and we can see if we need a special meeting. I don't want to decide on a special meeting yet because I do not think, and I will say this, I do not think that this board is efficient in person. I think we, we end meetings at midnight. We end meetings at 10:30 at night. We are not efficient. We do not have that discipline. Consequently, I would say written commentary is kinder to our counsel and easier for everyone to digest at their own pace, at their own timing.
Under 4.2 of our policy manual, two commissioners can ask for a special meeting. I have formally, I have formally made that request. If, if Commissioner Rep, are you?
I'm, I'm happy to second it. I mean, I think it's good to identify the time.
I don't think, you can't, can you make a motion and second and vote on it?
Well, this isn't a motion, this is, we are, we are calling for a meeting.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
I think there's merit to both concerns here. First of all, I think it's important for the board to have some face-to-face time to discuss this ordinance or this resolution, I keep calling it an ordinance. But I don't think we're there yet. I think what, I think we need both. I think we need to get written input from the various, from all the commissioners. Let us get a second draft together and then come, then, then be, have, if we're going to have a special meeting, have it at that point so that we have a more focused document. Because I think right now, we are not, you know, we, we, we have a new, newer design. We have things that, we have input from our consultants that haven't been incorporated. input from our consultants that haven't been incorporated here. I think it would be much, we'd be better served and more efficient if we were to get a second draft done before we have commissioner or commissioner's...
I could see, if we could get a, if we get comments in by Tuesday, Steve gets Wednesday, and we meet on Friday to go through everything that everybody's put in writing, because you really need to distill it down and write it, and then work, and then work through it. I could deal with that.
Well, one of the things that I would ask for then is that this document be put in some sort of master document format, so that we can add, you know, we can type in our...
Yeah, we have that capacity within teams, absolutely.
To be able to do that. My concern is that time is ticking, and if you're pressing to get this done by the May board meeting, I just wanted to suggest we might want to pencil in a date to sit down and meet collectively.
So you're suggesting Friday, the weekend tomorrow, give us plenty of time to get...
I will be there.
Get written comments in.
I will be there.
I would say I'm not sure staff can support that, from time to time.
Does staff need to be present for us to convene? Not all staff, does we need one staff? Is there any chance to do that, John?
You might have to record the meeting, correct, Steve?
Steve, can you... If it's a special meeting, we got to follow OMA, so we have to, we have to notice it up, we have to have, you know, minutes, we have to have staff support the meeting.
You'd have four of the five that would need to be here, Kyle, Costa, Denise, have it needed.
And Friday, the 19th, does not work for me, I'm out of town.
Same.
Can I clarify one comment?
You can.
When I said that stinks, I wasn't talking about this.
I can't.
I just have, it's my son's graduation this week, you know, these graduations last the whole damn weekend, right?
Yeah.
Rather than one day.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm in...
Thursday?
Well, listen, I just, I was going to say Wednesday. I'm scared, I will commit to reading the whole document by Wednesday, comments for sure. I don't, Friday, I'm supposed to be in Ohio.
Okay.
So...
You need to go.
I really want to be in Ohio.
That's next Thursday. I'm not, look...
Yeah. I think it's important we get written feedback from everyone.
Yeah.
I think that's really important as a first effort. If we can't, if we can't get it to where we want it, with the understanding that it can be amended by the new board, it's a bold step to say, "Let's get it to the two-yard line," and then see if we feel comfortable approving it or not.
There you go.
And that's fine, too. Or do you want to push forward for the 25th?
So hang up. So that is, it is now a public document.
Yes.
Incoming board members, one sitting here, one more who's probably, hopefully watching, is like, so they have access to it as well. So it's not going to be, "Oh my God, I've never heard of this before, am I getting this up?" Into, they have an opportunity to get themselves up to speed before they are officially on the board, so they will have knowledge of this stuff. It's not, they're not, no way are they coming in cold to this thing unless they've been in Antarctica for a while, pardon my... So it's like, I don't have, and it's not because I'm coming off the board, I'd be happy to meet whenever, anybody wants to meet on this thing, but the information is there, it's a readable document. Send in your edits and writing, which is great, you have it, and deal with it with the new board. It's not like they're coming in with their hands tied and their feet tied. Per point.
It's fine. That's fine. So does that mean that...
Wait, I want to make sure. The intent is that this board votes on a resolution May 25th, the week that, so that this board has the chance to go on record as to its, you know, all the work that's gone into where we are today.
First round of feedback is due on Wednesday, by noon, um...
Correct.
Now, I was saying, I would originally say Monday, now Tuesday, because Steve's got to be able to compile it. But Steve, if you set up the document that everybody can add their comments and everybody can put their red lines, then, yeah, they'll know.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, this works.
Yeah.
Okay. So feedback, just to clarify, feedback is due on Tuesday?
End of business.
End of business. Okay. And everyone will be able to see everyone, oh, is that a violation if everyone sees everyone else? Is that it?
Uh...
Send them all into you, you, BCC.
Send it all, yeah, I think...
I think it's really important that everyone has access to other people's comments. Not contemporaneously.
I understand.
But like, the village, you know, had their process where everyone could ask questions of their document, and everyone could see them, and everyone could see the answers.
I agree.
Yeah, we can design that, so...
Yeah, they can design it to them.
Yeah.
One of the paragraphs, I don't know if it's 72, was where we, as board members, were representing that the design was what was minimally necessary to support the project, using the village's language of the ordinance. We are not technical people. This is where I would think that we would need to have the engineer do an engineering report that would then become an attachment or an exhibit to this.
And both Matt Wright and his consultant, Chabica, have reviewed this, and they've provided comments to Steve. So that, those comments haven't been incorporated. But now, I think those really are, yes, and those really are the substantive, I mean, there's only, you know, five or six, seven really key points that address these subjective determinations that are really guided by our professional consultants, that need to be the subject.
One of the other things that I think we need to see, and that I've been asking for, for two years, and that is, we need to see the surveys from the 2030 plan. They need to be made available. Mr. Peterson, I know you reached out to Scott Ferris. Someone has them. They're somewhere.
Scott, he doesn't, he hasn't given them to me. I've searched our...
Well, I understand.
It's from 2013, I'm not going to be able to find it.
I understand. Warren, you and Scott have worked together. I think perhaps you, as president of this board, can ask Scott to please produce the surveys.
The surveys of the individual participants' opinions?
No, these were surveys.
Oh, no. Oh, no. The opinion surveys?
The Lakefront Master Plan survey is...
No, 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 I understand. But I would argue that where we are now is dramatically different from where we were then.
But the problem is...
And consequently, what we need to pay attention to is where we are now.
I don't dispute that. But...
Digging up historical surveys from, I don't, I just don't think it adds value, and I think it wastes time and effort. I think we're, this is the situation where you're asking John and Scott Ferris to do work. What I think we need to focus on is this, get our comments in by Tuesday for this, turn this document, make sure we understand what's in it, and see if we can get it across the finish line. If we can't, I understand that, and that would be a disappointment, but if we can, we should endeavor to do so. I don't want to hear anymore about 2013 surveys.
Here's the issue.
They're not relevant.
Yeah, they're very relevant.
Not anymore.
Because the foundation...
Not anymore.
May I make a suggestion? We go to item seven, staff reports.
It's fine. We've established a deadline and Tuesday deadline.
Tuesday deadline, end of business.
Excellent.
Mr. Cotto, you interrupted me, and I will speak. The foundation for an armored stone breakwater design has been the 2030 plan. We have heard about 2030 plan forever, yet there is no, there is no, what do I want to say, citizen input that said people wanted these stone, armored stone breakwaters. In fact, on the few documents that I found from the 2030 plan FOIAs, people did not like breakwaters. We have had one resident after another come saying, "We don't want armored stone breakwaters." But then we always revert them back to the 2030 plan.
Yeah. We, excuse me, we had motions, like, back in October, and we all voted on them, and they passed.
You did. But if you read Mr. Attorney Adams' handiwork here, the basis for all of this goes back to the 2030 plan. And so maybe that just needs to get removed from this resolution.
Okay, that's one person's opinion. Let's...
That should be, that should be part of your comments, Tim.
Thank you.
If you feel incorrectly referenced, by all means, send it in. Okay. Stanford reports. Who would like to go first? Hardly heard anything from you, Peterson.
I, yeah. Paddle, we are working through that. You might have seen the fencing come down. A lot of the grading work has been completed, paving paths have been installed. Our next iteration is final punch, it's from a contractor, and then we'll get that backup original. So we got a few last-minute touch-ups for that, but we're right at the one-yard line, so we're excited about that. Gulf Forest Stormwater Project has been progressing very well. Contractor has been making great strides on the Gulf Forest with the conditions that we've had with wonderful weather. Fortunately, I believe we got a 70% chance of rain tomorrow, the delay of things...
94.
So we're at 94 already, so there you go. Nonetheless, though, they are working great thus far. We have not had to use all our contingency that we had asked the board for for the undercuts. They're, we're not going to be using that in its entirety, so, which is great, because that helps reduce the cost down from where we had, worst-case scenario, if you will. But the teamwork between DeMayo, the village, the park district, working with Botworth, Rick Jacobson, and Kemper has been terrific. There's been a great collaboration, will continue to be a great collaboration on that. Moving forward to lakefronts, mentioned already with our meeting next week, I will be engaging with Prudermah, and then we'll be able to have a report back to the board for staff update come the 25th, or maybe a board item, depending on where that conversation goes. And just real quick to address some concerns around dredging. The park district did submit a permit application to the Army Corps of Engineers based on the regional permit requirements for dredging that were submitted, based on our testing that we do every year for that, subnet testing, that test for asbestos and sieve tests that are required for us to complete the dredging. Those came back well within the required recommendations from the IDNR and the Army Corps, so we continued on with our project, knowing that we have a tight timeframe in front of us. I have since reached out to Steve Altman and had conversations with him. I will be following up with James Casey, who is still working as a representative for the IDNR to further conversations around the permit requirements for the IDNR for dredging, so we're going to address that, put them in. Previously, we had a 10-year permit, and then we're going to be looking to secure another future 10-year permit, so that's something we don't have to do every year, but that was something that we were looking forward to. And like I said, put in the application through the Corps, and we were at with our monitoring, and I thought that met the requirements from what I understood, but apparently I might have misstepped. But nonetheless, and met all the requirements for the testing required, so we just got to follow up with the paperwork, if you will, and based on my conversation with the IDNR today, they would suggest that that follows suit with what their opinion is as well. So we're moving forward on that.
Okay, pause. Please take a breath.
Sure.
Does everybody understand what Costa just said?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Yes.
Suzie? Suzie did. Okay. Suzie did.
Basically, we're going to get back...
Let's step back.
Sure.
What we were discussing was the dredging of Lloyd Beach Boat Launch.
Boat Launch itself, correct.
All right.
Yes.
Every year, we get wind-driven sand, it blows in there, fills it up, we have to dredge it out. Every year, we have to test that material to make sure that there's no bad stuff in there before we remove it.
With the compliance to place that on our beach before we can do that.
So hold on.
Yes.
So there was a, there was a comment this morning, or today, about this big pile of sand on Lloyd, saying that we're...
In violation of...
In violation of the IDNR. So you're telling me that we're not?
We're not in violation of the IDNR as far as sand placement on the beach. I just did not follow the proper permit procedure to do that. We did all the testing that's required for that, but I did not check the box in regards to permitting. I did through the Army Corps of Engineers, and submitted the permit application through the Corps for that, on that front.
What I want to highlight is that all the proper steps were taken to make sure that the material placed in the beach was safe, clean and safe.
Correct.
And what you just said is that you went through the tests, the test came back clean, you did that before you removed the material and spread it on the beach.
Correct.
And this is usual and customary, what we've been doing as a matter of practice for many, many years.
Correct.
Also, there's an obligation, a separate obligation to monitor the sand elevation after the, after the improvement to Lloyd. It's more for beach maintaining the proper sand elevations, right?
It's to make sure that we're not taking from the littoral system, that our design is not taken from that. The, or the mechanics of the system that is in place at Lloyd currently is the same system that we've been dredging for the last 20-plus years. And that system is to take that sand, put it back on the beach, and put it back in the system by continuing down to the next beach and not basically bypassing our beach. That's what we've done and will continue to do. Both the IDNR and the Army Corps understand that, our perspective, and are in support of that perspective.
Yeah.
Continue to do that, and we'll keep moving forward.
So that does address the comment that was made earlier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And like I said, the Corps was submitted on the 20th, signed and sent over. They have that in their information. Once I receive the information on the 20th for the sampling, I sent that along with that in a follow-up email to them for requirements of sampling that we did, to complete our testing for that. So once again, packaged and sent to show that we complied with all the requirements. But I did misstep, like I said, with the IDNR. I thought, as I read through the regional requirements for the Corps' permit, I misinterpreted the language in there, so I did not submit to both agencies, I submitted to one agency. And I've had conversations to rectify that, and the park district will be rectifying that issue.
The IDNR.
With the IDNR, correct.
There was a second comment made regarding the path down to Lloyd and some of the sloughing that occurred on that steep slope. Can you at least give just a short synopsis of what happened there?
Cliff notes. Essentially, with all the erosion that we sustained from the high lake event, we lost nearly, and I don't have the actual figure in front of me, I was looking it up to go back to the surveys, but between 40, 50, 50, excuse me, between 40 to 50 feet of bluff is what we lost. In that loss, we lost a lot of mature trees that were able to gain us the slope stabilization along with the slope itself that was at a greater three-to-one slope. So the slope, if you think about it, was a lot more flat. As we lost that erosion at the base, it turned that bluff edge to be more vertical. In our efforts when we built back the beach, we wanted to sustain the maintenance road in our efforts to be able to maintain the beach.
Be clear, be clear, we didn't build that road, it existed.
That, so I hold that, yes, you are correct. Looking at the plats of survey, the last plat that we have on record was from December 24th, I believe it was, of 20, or 1959. We purchased the property in '62. That was the only road access prior to us even owning the property down to the beach. The existing road to the north did not exist at that time. That was bluff. That road has been there, it's been paved in the past. We utilized it as a maintenance road to bring heavy machinery down, because there is important infrastructure that goes up that roadway. The water main for the community is underneath that road, so we use the current maintenance access road, which is the gravel road, to maintain our access down with heavy equipment. That's the reason we sustained it, instead of pulling the bluff back, cutting into the park land to restabilize that edge. We're going to, the reason we've taken a little longer, you've seen that the road has already been prepared in regards to the damage that is sustained with the erosion, we've already addressed that internally, but we are looking to make sure that we put back the proper procedure by cutting into the clay layer, shelving it in to establish that, and looking to make sure we got the proper plat material. Because of the environment it is in, and because of the slope of that bluff, it's very hard to sustain that bluff, and that was something that we were going to fight with for some time. So we're trying to make sure that any means and methods that we put forward to establish that back is being done in the right way. So we're just trying to be best stewards of our land. The amount of water that we took in that short rainfall just sheathed it over there, and we did have two failure points. I believe it was just topsoil and plantings, but we are building back, and we're going to be trying to build back in a better capacity than what we initially done in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there more updates, Costa?
No.
That's it for now.
Okay. Going around the circle, Kyle or Jim?
I'm happy to go. Our lakefront training is off and running. We had our first CPR AED certification course last night. We have lifeguard certification Saturday, Sunday this weekend, two CPR AEDs next week, lifeguard certification Saturday, Sunday next week, and then one more week of additional training. So it's a very busy time for us. Blades of Gold occurred last weekend, Friday and Saturday. It was a resounding success. In fact, Friday, all but one ticket was, or was purchased, so it was just a, a huge capacity crowd. Great attendance on Saturday as well. Credit goes to Christine Condon and Paul Schwartz for their, their mastery of that event. Just a great event every year, and continues to get better. AC Nielsen, the tennis center, the summer registration started on Monday, which is actually somewhat significant, because typically that registration would happen on a Saturday. They decided to do things a little bit differently, and from what I hear, it went very well. So credit to staff pivoting on that. The Weneka Golf Club is off and running, Discover Golf, and Driving Range Programming. They are scheduled for their spring open house on Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There's also a club fitting there, if anyone is interested in coming out for that. And our marketing teams between Kemper Sports and the Park District met last week to further understand how they can support and complement their efforts, as well as making sure that all attention is driven to the Weneka Golf Club website, where there is the most up-to-date information regarding the stormwater renovations of the golf course, flyover videos that are posted monthly, updates of the happenings and different events that are going on around there. So a lot of really exciting things going on with the golf course. And then if you have an opportunity tomorrow to walk around the Skokie Playfield, I suggest to check out the baseball field. We just completed a laser grading project on a couple of the fields, and this was in partnership with KWBA to help us to get a very important project done at a much less cost to the Park District. And that's just a great example of the community partnerships we have. Want to touch on that?
Sure. In addition to the, or the dredging work, we were getting quotes in averaging above $30,000, upwards of $45,000 and change. Greg Fields and Andrew Carrera worked in conjunction with our contractor, Lenny Hoffman, to drive that cost down. So once again, being mindful of dollars, you know, that we have, we went ahead and did some additional value engineering. Team was out there to support Lenny Hoffman and their efforts for approximately three days, and in turn, we were able to bring the dredging in under $15,000. So that is a $30,000 item that we presented.
Wait a minute, hold on. That's $10,515. I knew you were going to do the math. That's a joke. For anybody listening.
That's for anything for, like, that's operating.
Yep, yep.
That's an operating cost.
Just kidding.
To show that.
That's 50%. I'm going to focus on that.
That's right.
Celebrate the success.
Yeah, and I have to say, that, that example of value engineering is something that the Parks Maintenance Staff have written the book on. That is a small example of many such occurrences throughout the district, so I'm glad that, glad we're able to celebrate that.
Jim? Oh, sorry.
Quick question, Kyle. In terms of quantity, do you have enough people who will be certified to be lifeguards to be able to properly man the beaches this summer?
Yes, just on head count alone, we are right around 50 lifeguards currently. That is a matter of, at this point, making sure everyone shows up. So that's, that's the greater challenge.
Sure.
So you get to herd the cats every time?
Yes, very much so.
All right, Jim?
Yeah, a couple of items here. The auditors, because we ended with a June meeting, are up to June 7th, will not be prepared to present their findings at the June 7th meeting, so we'll have to follow up at the July 20th meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
But they'll submit a report that we can all review, perhaps?
Yes, yes. It will send specifically in advance for you to review prior to that meeting, July 20th.
Excellent, thank you.
I've been working with them to do exactly that.
Thank you.
This past week, I completed the, the Foundation's 990 filing with the IRS, turned that in. It's due on the 15th of May every year. Got that in earlier this week. I also finished the Illinois Attorney General 990 report, which is a subsidiary to the IRS 990 report. So those are done and turned in ahead of schedule. I've been working with Kelly Coast and Chapman Cutler regarding potential arbitrage issues for the 2020 bond issue, which will come up in the three-year anniversary of July 28th this year.
Thank you.
I've reached out to the people who are managing the proceeds of those bonds, the IPDLAF organization. One of the complimentary services they provide is filing that arbitrage paperwork.
Excellent.
On our behalf, so we will not have to pay anybody to do that. There's no third-party contractor we have to hire. I've got the documents from Kelly Coast and submitted them to IPDLAF. They were pleased that I was getting ahead of this, and getting aid into them in plenty of time to prepare the paperwork. So that is underway. Those paperwork and that report will be filed in advance at the July 20th deadline. Wanted to also follow up on something that's been out there for a while. We've opened six subsidiary accounts at Chase Bank for the Illinois Parks, for the Weneka Parks Foundation.
Well done.
They are subsidiary to the account that exists there. We also have a standalone business, interest-earning business account at Chase Bank for, for the Weneka Park District. We also have a, an account at Fifth Third, interest-bearing business account at Fifth Third, and we're on the verge of having a business account at City Bank as well. They have all the paperwork, we're just waiting for the account number to be issued so we can fund that account.
Two huge reasons I can say, the arbitrage and the bank accounts. Excellent, thank you.
Yes, so it's covered the audits, new accounts, the 990 foundation, the arbitrage issues. That's all I've got for you right now.
That's, that's.
That's pretty good.
That's a big list. Denise?
We recently acquired some new updated manuals for commissioners. They'll be especially helpful to our new commissioner, but also available in our resource library.
Excellent.
If anybody else wants to do that.
We have a copy of Steve Adams' book in our library, signed.
You know what? I will bring complimentary copies. How many people want the copy? I will bring a complimentary copy.
Zero, Steve.
I've got two here. I'll bring, I'll bring a handful to next meeting.
Is there anything new and notable in these new books? In your opinion, Denise? Not yet. You're only halfway through, yes. Got you, okay. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. They've only just arrived, they look fresh.
One of them is just the statutes, so it's no annotations, no explanations.
Before you close on staff reports, you know, Costa has one more to talk about.
Oh, okay.
John, you want to cover it? We're going to work with this.
No, I'm going to read an email. So Meg O'Gara is with the Garden Guild of Weneka, so I'm going to send, or here's what she wrote to Costa. "I promised you two years ago," I think, and I know I mentioned it to John, "but our new butterfly garden, which is a collaborative effort between Garden Guild of Weneka and the Park District, is officially a part of the Smithsonian Archives." So we'll get a, a certificate here, and we'll have that available, and we're going to talk about putting a plaque out there. This is really Kelly Edwards, the Parks Maintenance Staff, and all the work they do, and the collaborative effort with Meg O'Gara really gives her heart and soul to this beautiful butterfly garden. It's on the north side of the wire. It's unbelievable. I saw them out there working today, and I thought, you know what? It's great that we got members of the community that want to make this place better. Absolutely, and. It's a beautiful garden. They put in, you know, blood, sweat, and tears to do it, and Costa and his team, Kelly Edwards notably, collaborate with Meg and the Garden Guild of Weneka. So Costa has a copy of the announcement that is circulating, so I think that's a big win for Costa's team, and notably for Kelly Edwards, so.
Thank you.
Just looking at the efforts of the ladies.
David, you're welcome to join us on the Green Bay Trail, the volunteer to take out, playing for Green Bay Trail. Pretty much every other Tuesday.
Okay.
Come on and join us. Every Tuesday.
Moving on to item number eight, banners of the director.
Two real quick items. Kyle has been working closely with Robin Schwartz and the folks at D36, the intergovernmental agreement, so you'll see more information on that in short order.
Sure.
And number two, Kyle and I attended the legislative conference in Springfield, Illinois. Can't ask for a better place, but it was sunny both days. And number of the Park Districts have commissioners who attend the event, and they actively interface with the legislators. So it's something we would love the commissioners to consider for 2024. But it was a great event. We met quite a number of people that are meaningful to the Park District and things that we're trying to get done, and fundraising and the like, so it was time well spent. That's it.
Okay, or liaison reports? Because of the school.
Of course I have one.
Of course I have one. But that's okay, but you have the school.
So the caucus, big news for the caucus, town hall next week, 5:18 at 6:30 PM.
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom. The format will be a couple slides for presidents, and then I think it was five to eight minutes.
Seven.
The format.
Seven minutes given. Warham, speaking.
I have asked Kyle and Costa to put together, and John, to put together succinct summaries that I could deliver regarding their outstanding performance.
Okay, and then the other big news is the survey is delayed until the fall. Oh. They were saying they'd gotten your comments.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
That's disappointing. I was coming on the survey. All right, anyone else? You have a board liaison report?
I just want to comment a little bit more color on D36. I have had communication with Emily Rose. I would expect Emily to come to this board on June 7th meeting to present their plans and the request for the transference of the land that is necessary for the Crow Island expansion. The expectation is that Kyle and Costa will be working on dealing with the existing first-grade playground within the IGA. They may come back with a request for the transference, and my conversation with Steve, that would occur if we decided to go down that road. We'd do it all at once with the transference that they need for the gymnasium.
All right, may I have a motion to go to close?
I have one other comment.
Oh, sure.
It reinforces what Kyle said about Blades of Gold. I had the pleasure of attending that event on Saturday evening. It was packed. There was standing room on length. What I found so refreshing was that the skaters, the soloists, were being absolutely cheered, and people, the, the other skaters were knocking their skates against the wall. You saw teammanship, and you saw absolutely no envy for skaters that had higher ability than others. I wrote a special thanks to Paul Schwartz and, and to Christine Condon, but I also want to say tonight, how fabulous that group is, how hard they worked, and the volunteers that come in to put that program on. It is truly a successful, you know, event for this Park District. I'd like to see us feature it in, in some of our web-based outreach. So I just want to thank you, thank them.
I've been here, I've been here. It's quite the show, it's quite the show.
Good to stand.
It's always stand. Put it on the spreadsheet. This is going to be a new joke. May I, okay, we're ready to go into close. May I have a motion to go into close? Pursuant to.
Sorry.
Oh. Five ILCS 120 slash section 2C1 for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of dispossessive specific employees of the public body. Five ILCS 120 slash section 2C5 for purchase or lease of property. Five ILCS 120 slash 2C6 for the setting of a price, of a price for sale or lease of property. And five ILCS 120 slash 2C11 for litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular body has been filed and is pending for court or administrative tribunal,